Okay, it is six oh four P M. I am officially calling this meeting into session. Please, everyone, as we typically do, let's start with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing as we take a moment of silence and consider those who have gone before us. Thank you.
You guys still do the pledge in school?
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah, everyone.
Alright, first thing in the morning.
You betcha. Alright, roll call.
Okay, um trustee Alter.
I'm here.
Trustee Decker.
I'm here.
Trustee O'Malley.
Here.
Trustee Sauer.
Here.
Trustee Shoddy.
Here.
Uh Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Here.
And Mayor Allen.
I am present. Uh we will have our attorney here shortly, um she's in traffic. So first off on the agenda, uh we have a presentation discussion uh from uh with Matt Curley, who is the residence?
Executive Director.
Executive Director.
Eastern Rensler County Solid Waste Management Authority.
Which we lovingly refer to as Urswama.
My kids call me the garbage cane.
There you go, so.
Is it Urswama? Do you pronounce that C or not?
Urswama.
Whatever you want, but it's Eastern Rensler County.
Cause we haven't, we haven't decided that which is right.
Whatever you wanna call us, we're good.
So for, for context, as a village, we have uh garbage delivery, which is part of the bidding that we have to do.
Pickup, garbage pickup.
Garbage pickup, and we have our transfer station where a village and town um drop all the various items. So if you don't mind giving us a little bit of a spiel, history and context about what you guys do and how you work with our village and other municipalities.
Um just if I could say one quickly, I gave out all this information last time.
Sure.
Uh with um all of the things and then the uh amounts that um that Urswama does, and I also gave a um attached to that also was um what the different towns and villages charge. So I gave that to you last time.
Alright, thank you.
So I believe the questions come up why, why the village is in the authority. So there's a, there's a bunch of reasons for that. It's in your calendar every year. There's a whole bunch of uh things that we do, from uh garbage bidding to your transfer station report and all types of things. But recently, I'm working with another town in Rensler County that currently can $112 a ton get rid of garbage and C and D for your transfer station. You guys are getting, getting rid of it for $79 a ton. That's one of the benefits of being in the authority. So for one year, it's about a $30,000 savings than if you were paying with some of the other municipalities are paying, cause we're at $70,000 versus 112. But going over that, I looked at the transfer station, your transfer station. Our second biggest transfer station is Stephen Town. They get rid of 112 tons of garbage a year. You guys are a village and you get rid of 368 in 2022. That's a huge number compared to all of our other uh towns. So I suspect most of that's not coming from the village, it's coming from elsewhere, which is fine, as long as you're getting paid for it. The other thing you do with the transfer station is you get uh you can co-mingle recyclables. And recyclables market has changed. It used to be we got paid for it probably 10 years ago. Now we pay $150 a ton, might be 155, something like that, to get rid of recyclables. It's in your contract currently for curbside in the village, so there's no extra cost for that. So my question to you would be, why are we collecting co-mingles at the transfer station? You have to pay to pull them, bring them to a certain other location, and you also have to pay to get rid of them. In 2022, that was probably $6,000. I don't believe you're collecting for that at your transfer station. I could be wrong on that. I don't know your fee schedule at the transfer station. I don't know what you're charging for C and D, that's 368 tons. You're paying $79 a ton to get rid of it, plus the cost of the haul, which is about $239 a haul. So I have numbers on that of what it's cost a village for 2022. I don't have 2023 done yet, obviously, cause the years aren't over. But I don't have what you're getting for income on that. I could probably do a better analysis of where you're losing money if I knew what you were paying your transfer station guy and what you were taking in for revenue to see, cause I'm guessing you're losing, I believe the mayor and I spoke briefly earlier, he said that strip you are losing. So there's a lot of ways guys could combat that. You could charge, we have some of our other municipalities charge $5 a car, no matter what you bring into the transfer station, it's $5 a car. So user fee they call it, and that helps your revenue a little bit. I don't know if it'd be enough for you. Stephen Town has colored bags. If you wanna bring in recyclables, they have a yellow bag. If you wanna bring in garbage, it's a purple bag. And there's this charge for that, you would charge for it at a village hall. And then when they bring the bags, oh yes, you have one of our bags, you're good to go. Um there's a lot, you could limit it to only village residents. Nobody else comes from outside the village. I don't, I've heard, there's people that come from Vermont. I don't know if that's true or not. I've heard that story. I don't know if it's, again, I don't know if it's true. So I, I think there's some work that needs to be done on the transfer station. We could probably save you some money, but I would need the revenues of what you're bringing in, so I could look at the whole picture on that, and of course, I would need your feedback as well.
I think there's, I think there's lots of work needs to be done at the transfer station. I think if you look at all the ones, probably, except for maybe Nassau Village, I think uh ours is probably the worst one.
I, I wouldn't say to the worst, but you're a little, you have the largest volume out of all of our towns. Um and Stephen Town is open probably four days a week. I think you guys are Tuesdays mornings and Saturdays the last I remember.
Yeah.
In the spring and summer, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
What did you say Stephen Town was again?
Four days a week.
One twelve.
Uh I believe they're Mondays, Wednesdays, Fridays and Saturdays in the summer, and they close on Wednesdays in the winter.
Hundred and twelve tons versus our 368.
Oh, okay, there were, I thought it was $112 per ton, but I, but they only did, they 112 tons?
They did 112 tons, you did 368, it was 2022.
Okay, okay. Gotcha.
So when, when uh I worked for E R C Community Warehouse, I got to see all these fabulous places. So I know where they are, what they look like, and ours certainly used a lot to be desired as far as setup and unloading and that kinda thing. And to me, we should take out the co-mingling and use that pad to get rid of C and D. And it would free up a lot of space down below.
I don't know what you mean by get rid of C and D.
Not C and D, get rid of the co-mingling. Since all the village residents already have C and D, have a co-mingling.
Co-mingling, yeah. Have that. So where is all their co-mingling coming from is the question?
Well, most of it's coming from town or.
Out of town.
Right.
And if you're not charging for it, why, why should the village pick up that cost?
And if we are charging, we're not charging enough.
I, I would need to see that, and I would need to see the fee schedule. I, I'll, I'll work with anybody on this, but I think there's some more, some money to be saved at the transfer station. The, the thing about not taking um recyclables is you have a compactor now, there now, which is very valuable. It's nice to have. We recently got, we spoke with uh the new, the new uh, the new Neil, I can't remember.
Oh Kenny, Kenny, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Kenny and Bruce, and we brought the company in, and we showed where you weren't using enough. Most people are getting nine or 10 poles out of a contractor, compactor. You guys are getting like one or two. So we've saved a lot of money this year in poles because we started using the compactor to its thing. And if you don't use it for compactor, compacting, I don't know what you would use it for.
Could you use that for garbage?
Uh you could use it for garbage, absolutely. And you could also use it for uh cardboard or anything, cause cardboard is a zero to get rid of. It's a zero cost currently, so that would work as well.
So can I ask a quick question? It, so co-mingled, cardboard is separate from co-mingled?
We, if you can, we do that in Scotticoke and in Pittstown. We have a separate dumpster just for cardboard, cause when we get rid of it, we just pay for the pole and it's washed. Doesn't cost anything, they don't, we don't get any money. You used to get money for it years ago, now you do not.
So we could get rid of the co-mingled, but keep the card, just keep cardboard?
Allow cardboard in, yes, and you would not have to charge residents for that. Couple other changes that's, that's happened this year, electronics. We no longer charge for electronics. We have a new deal with electronics. So you guys can stop charging for electronics at your transfer station. I don't know if you wanna do that yet because you're losing money there, but technically, you don't have to charge for electronics anymore. We have a new contractor who is fantastic, and uh we're getting rid of that at no charge currently for TVs.
There's no charge for TVs and monitors?
That's correct, yeah.
Um does that include like appliances, or is that separate?
As appliances, it would be metal, we typically would not charge for washers, dishwashers, that type of thing.
Okay.
Refrigerators you have to go because of the freon?
Refrigerators because of the freon, and we usually charge, I think we pay 10 bucks or 15 bucks to have it drained, and once they're drained, they mark them and they go right in the middle ban, metal bin, and you get rid of them per month, cause we get money for our amount. It's a few bit money, not me, you.
Matt, do you know how much we're paying to, per month to get rid of the uh dumpster for garbage alone?
The, the tip, the tip fee for stuff that's inside is 79.
Per ton.
Twenty-five or something. Um and it's costing about $239 a pole to have that emptied and then empty one back in its place.
And that's once a week?
It depends, you guys are, it's way more than that because, as a matter of fact, he just called one in on Monday, he called another one in today. That's, that's high volume.
For the garbage, not C and D?
Uh garbage and C and D are the same price a year, but it's still at 79.25, doesn't matter what it is.
Yeah, but these are separate containers, the garbage is.
That's correct, yeah, but same price.
But that's usually the one that's not from village residents, but it's mostly from outside?
I don't know that. That, that could be true, yeah.
Well, I, yeah. Do you have any other situations where you have on the municipality, municipality owning uh transfer station where the majority of the usage is not residents of that municipality?
No, because they limit that. Stephen Town, for example, if you're not a Stephen Town resident, you do not get to use your transfer station. However, in Pittstown and Scotticoke, if we, uh Scotticoke is the second Saturday of the month, the only day they're open. Pittstown, the third Saturday of the month, the only day they're open. They don't check residency on that, so we might be getting smaller people in there, but we charge for that and we're not losing money because they've been doing it for a while.
Right, which means it's all composite.
Um and, and I'm willing to look at, help whoever you guys put in charge of this, or I'll, if I get some, if I can get some cost, I'm willing to look at it and give some suggestions on how you, I think Rob said earlier that you were actually looking at a way to charge differently, whether it be the bags or the fee, or look at your, what you're charging currently.
Right now, we charge a different amount, and uh Chuck kinda eyeballs it. You know, he does, it's a X amount, I forget what it is, it's in here. Um for truck, for, for C and D, it's uh $20 for a carload and uh car trunk load and uh $45 for a regular pickup load. But that has nothing to do with weight.
True. So yeah, that's where the eyeball comes into effect. If you're bringing in a truckload of shingles, you need to charge more than the $45. If it's just regular junk, you're five forty-five dollars.
But without having a scale, there's no way to really, you know.
I don't think the scale's the issue, because if you saw the price of the scale, you would, you would think different. They're very expensive. You have to have them calibrated. It's, it's a way bigger deal than you anticipated.
We've looked into that and there's, there's no way.
Yeah.
Yeah, you were looking at getting us a used funny used one and it didn't work out.
Yeah, you can't, and, and plus you still have to have them calibrated every year, you have to professionally install. It's, and if you do it right, you really don't need, you don't really need the scale. Um especially at your level, you would think it's a village, the numbers would be low, but as we've already discussed, the numbers are incredibly high for a village, incredibly high. I, I can't believe it. I've been wanting to talk about this for a while, and I have, I've been unable to get in front of you, so that's why I'm having.
Do you have other villages?
I'm sorry?
Do you have other villages that need corporate?
Yes, Nassau.
And do they, do they, and do they, how do they separate them from the town that they're in?
Um they, they, well, number one in the village, you know, all the residents, you guys are a way bigger village than most of our villages, so some more like small. Castleton, Nassau, way smaller, so they know.
But not I mean the town that the village is in, that, in, in those cases like Nassau, does a town itself also have a transfer station?
No, they might, they might. I don't know that because they're not a part of the authority, okay, but yeah.
My understanding is a lot of town residents use our transfer station. That's why the number.
Yes.
But and for co-mingled, garbage, yes, but for co-mingled, which used, we used to get paid for the recycling consent out.
Right, recyclables, now we pay.
Now we pay to have it taken away.
And you still pay to, to truck it out of there?
Right, and we still get it picked up in our house, so we'll pay twice.
So you're saying a shingle should be charged at a higher rate, cause I.
Cause they weigh.
Ours is the same as any other C and D item.
And that might be why your numbers are a little bit higher, they know that they can bring in there.
And that may lead to, hey, this is a good place to dump your, get rid of your stuff if you're a contractor, because it's a lot cheaper than over in Vermont.
Or anywhere, it's cheaper than Albany, you know, so I don't know if that's what's happening or not. I don't know that. I'd probably have to spend some time at the transfer station and look at that, but I'm not so sure you guys want that yet. We have to look at things before that.
Sure.
There's a couple of other things at the transfer station. Currently, the authority has a paint program where we accept paint, and all of our other villages, all of our other municipalities accept Who's It Falls. And you can bring paint to the transfer station. It costs nothing to the resident, and it costs nothing to the village. It's no charge. It's a program that we started last year.
Yeah, I think Kenny went and did the training, or talked, he talked about it.
He won't, he won't train. I can't get anybody, I can't get him trained. Um and once he's trained, it's so easy, 10 minutes. If it has a, an original label on it, and it has a lid on it, you're good to go. It's, it's so easy, and then you put it in a, they make these plastic bins with rollers on it. You put it in there, when it's full, they come pick it up. There's not very much to do except take it from the resident and put it in.
And, and so what you said, you couldn't give him, he won't train?
I, I, I can't get him trained. I don't know how, I can't get anybody to get him trained. I, I can't get him signed up. I don't know how to do that.
Oh, I, I, so there's, there's no one to train him is the problem, not him having.
Oh, no, I have, I'll train him, and I have the guy who knows the program.
Well, we have to give him permission and time and everything to go do it.
Yeah, and he's already working on the sewer, um uh preparing for the next exam for the wastewater treatment plant stuff.
But is every, can, can somebody, somebody, anybody go? And then could like Phil go and?
If he's gonna be the one taking the paint.
Hell.
But can they, can that, that person then train another person?
I can, I can train.
You're the only person who can do the training?
No, there's a paint guy too. He likes to come here, cause he likes to schmooze, but I can do it in five minutes.
He's coming, is that he'll come here?
Yeah, we'll come right here, we'll come right to the, right to the transfer range.
Is that something Charlie can do and assume?
Chuck, you mean?
Yes.
Uh, uh, he, he probably could. I mean, he only works, what, 10 hours, eight hours a, a week, right? Or 10 hours a week.
Yeah, just, just the two days, yeah.
We don't need an answer tonight, but.
Yeah, definitely should get some money.
Residents love that program, love it.
Yeah.
Because they don't have to go to household hazardous waste day.
Right, cause it used to hold it regional, it used to do it like in Scott, right, and you do it like quarterly or something like that?
Yeah, I get a lot of inquiries about this both in the paint.
Once a year, okay.
This year, it's, it's in Stephen Town, and Who's It Falls has actually been talked about at our board meeting for next year. We did it a few years ago here in Who's It Falls.
Okay, I remember that, okay.
Can I ask why that is only once per year?
It's really expensive, really expensive. Over $20,000 to have you at that. That's why it's the one year. We used to do it quite here, but it was still on the budget, which means the budget, it was tough.
Got you.
So that's why it went here once a year. And our volume has actually started to top a little bit. We've been doing it in the authority since nineteen something five or something, and it's actually, we're starting to, I think we're catch up on it a little bit. The paint, the paint programs helped immensely, because even when we have household hazardous waste day, the paint is no charge. The paint company we're working with works with our household hazardous waste company, and it's brought our cost down a little bit.
Well, I think um we, we've had so many major things that have been on our radar, and there's been a lot of things that have been slowly gathering, Stevens, we need to take care of this. We've talked about taking care of this and kind, my, kind of modifying our expenses and, and just looking at the whole thing, but I think this is the right time. And I'm getting the sense from you guys, this is the right time to take a very big look.
Yep.
At shifting things around. My only concern would be, it has been operating this way for so long, and even though we are just the village and the town uses it, it is a regular thing that the town uses. So I wanna make sure that we are um cognizant of the fact that there's a lot of people who regularly use this, and if we make big changes, that may lead to big frustrations from village residents or town residents. Not to say that those aren't valid or worth, you know, worth it, but I just think that we need to make sure that we're aware uh of those possible concerns and probably also discussing things directly with the town. I know we've talked about the fact that we've been taking a financial hit, and the fact that this has been more of a service we've offered, knowing that it, we're taking a hit on it. Um but I think the economics of right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but.
Both as a municipality, you can take the fact that we can't do that anymore, but at the same time, knowing as regular residents and taxpayers, it's also really hard on us as individuals. So it kind of leans, lends to, we do still wanna make sure that we offer this in a responsible way, that doesn't completely wreck everybody financially, or even make a significant dent.
Right, but at the same time, we can't operate in a, in a, I mean, twice as much cost.
Yeah.
That, that were operational cost.
Yeah.
For the sake of that. I mean, we also, and I know the town has been in good faith, we talked about it, we just have to re, ask, ask for it.
Yep.
To get money from the town, because we know the majority of the usage is by the town residents.
I think the big problem is just pricing.
And if I get.
You know and I know that.
Well, I will say.
It's not consistent, it's not.
When I first moved into this area, I actually lived in the village of Nassau, and that was the first time I had been to a transfer station, and that was, it was, it's a really nice setup they have there.
The town tran, Nassau.
Well, the town tran, yeah, it's, it's, it's right near the village, but it's, it's in the town, and it's a really nice transfer station they have there. Accessibility wise, you can just, you know, you could go over and drop off certain things various times.
They call me from that transfer station.
What's that?
They call me from that transfer station on occasion.
Yeah, so I, going back to what Kevin was saying, like, s, the systems that we have in place at the foundation also should be looked at. They're probably very outdated, and we can make some significant changes to make significant improvements in how that works there. Maybe even to the fact that we consider opening it for an extra day, or we try to hire someone more specifically on a regular basis or something, something of that nature. Like, I just wanna kinda put all of those ideas out there, but it's gonna need a couple of people to dive into this really, and I think we do with, with Matt helping us out. Um and also have our own internal discussions as we would need to. Kevin?
I think that um rather than paying a service, coming to their houses, it's cheaper for them to attract to our transfer station to just throw the bag in for three bucks and the uh.
We're saying, they can tell them on Facebook, that's what we, we get it now.
But you get, but then we get curbside in the village.
No, no, for town residents.
No, but that'd be.
Town residents.
I don't know about that, yeah, I can't figure.
I don't know, what's a, what's a typically cost for a, a rural resident to have a service once a week?
It's all over the board.
Yeah.
And if you, if you work with them or complain, they'll negotiate it. For example, Twin Bridges for a while there was, was doing a pro, absolutely, almost nothing, and then they got a lawsuit, and they just sold it to Casella. That's a whole different story. That they, that got really ugly, really ugly. The other thing I wanna make sure I bring up to you is that I, I would need your, your uh income.
Yeah, no, I've got a note, I've got a note to that, yeah.
Cause I would need what you're, what you're paying.
Need revenue coming in, what we're paying our employees, whatever, yeah.
Denise know, Denise, Denise and I have kinda talked about that, so she has to know that.
Oh, I'm sure she does.
Yeah.
And I can always throw it into a spreadsheet and make it nice and easy to see how things work.
Cause you don't have enough to do?
Oh, you know, it's fun.
Matt, do you know off the top of your head what we pay the waste authority per year?
I don't, I didn't bring that number with me. Um I, I wanna see 26 or 30, something like that.
What, what we pay for Urswama?
Yes.
Wait, you gave me that.
I'm sure I did.
Um. So, um.
Thinking.
What, what's the difference, members here? Wait, you can, you can translate this to me.
Membership.
I don't do numbers, so.
Yeah, that's it. Right there, Who's It Falls is $20,881.81. And how it works is it's a percentage of our budget, so Scotticoke has the biggest percentage, then Pittstown, then Stephen Town, and then Bill, and then uh Who's It Falls, cause you guys are very populous compared to the rest of the world. So that's what it is. Now, we, I'm currently working with another town who's thinking around about the idea of getting the authority. That would be beneficial, everybody gets in the authority, I have their number with them.
Right, it was down, right.
So how come when you bid out uh municipal pickup, maybe we're the only ones that have our own municipal pickup?
No, no, there's a whole bunch of them.
Why can't you, we have pretty good rate, I think, anyway, but why can't you bid those all out together?
Um it, it has something to do with the legality of it. Aha, actually, I don't bid it out. I put the bid specs out, but the village of Valley Falls, excuse me, Who's It Falls, you guys vote on it and you accept the bid.
Yeah, we do it at the end.
Yeah, we, I don't know why, but you can't do it that way. I don't know why, maybe you include what you got an attorney involved.
Like creating monopoly almost, right, for if you're controlling, you know, in butter county.
And they're all different towns, so you have to get it coordinated. You'd probably do it, I, but it's been that way since the beginning. We bid the tip fee for the garbage that's in that truck, that goes out. We bid that for everybody. We bid the, the haul rate where they take the boxes from your transfer station, that's bid for everybody. Those rates are all the same, but the individual garbage pickup, that goes for you for a couple of reasons, I believe. If, if, if the garbage hauler you pick is picking up stuff that's not in the village of Who's It Falls, and it's on your dime, you guys catch them. It has nothing to do with us, we can't lease that. You guys have to lease that. And that's happened. Uh happened really bad in uh Castleton. The driver, a, a Russian gentleman was picking stuff up that was not in the village of Castleton, and, and that got caught. That was probably 10 years ago, nine years ago now, I've been a while. Uh they have county weeks like you do. Uh Pittstown has, had TAM, um and now it's Casella, cause TAM got bought out, and the rest of, rest of the municipalities had county week.
So Casella bought TAM out too?
Correct.
Yeah, they've got an old monopoly thing going on.
It's very incestuous business.
John, what's his name, Scott, he's getting rich.
He's very rich. He's got a guy down in Miami, I believe.
So, who would like to sort of take on a really, really hard look at how we do things with the likelihood of shifting the way we do things and the charges either at the beginning of 2024 or maybe around like April 1 of 2024, something of that nature?
I'll be, I'll do it since I already have a.
Alright.
Yeah.
Great, okay, thank you, and uh awesome.
The only other thing I wanna bring up, sure, Mr. Mayor, is that we have a meeting at the authority. We have six a year. We have two.
Uh-uh.
We have two at the beginning and two at the end, and then two in the middle. So it's four, four meetings a year. And at that meeting, the other, the other representatives are from other towns and villages. They all talk about what they're doing, and we haven't had anybody, and Deb is great. She does our, uh, she's our treasurer for the thing.
She signs checks.
And she signs our checks, because Penny Pleasant lives close to the village here, so that she goes to see Deb all the time, and that's been working great. But we don't have a, we don't have the ability to have her at a meeting and get some, get some information to her. So I'd really like to see somebody.
Some representation.
Okay, got it.
And that's all I have. Anything else for me?
Any other questions, trustees?
No, thank you, you've been very helpful.
Matt, thank you very much.
Yeah, and let me know what, how I can help.
Will do, thank you.
Appreciate it, it's okay, man, thank you.
So much.
You too.
Thanks for coming up, Matt.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, these are exciting meetings.
I have one last thing, I'm good. I'm gonna tell you one thing, no, on the supervisor's, this time, we had a board meeting last night, there was no residents, I'm a little chuffed.
Thank you, students and residents. Alright, so a few announcements, they're on the uh agenda as well, but I just wanna highlight a few things. The Walter Awood Tractor and Agricultural Show is rescheduled to this Saturday. Um and I have everything that is going to feature, I got that right off of online. Kevin, is there anything you wanna add to that?
Nope, still on for the Saturday, hoping the rain holds off to the south, and I just, just can't keep letting it out there another week.
I know, I know.
It's good though, you need to do it last week, you put a, when the tractor's left.
That would have been such a wet field, and that grass would have been.
Actually, we've had it in the rain before, and leaving it, the main part of the uh park really doesn't, really holds up well to the tractor.
Alright, I'm, I'm still glad to see the other events that went on did very well, but uh I'm looking forward to going out and seeing the tractors this Saturday, so, thank you. Um also wanna thank Myron Filkins of Filkins Valley Farms, who donated time and all the pumpkins for the fall decorations at the gazebo, municipal building, and even the post office. Uh we did get a request, and I think I know how this one's gonna play out, but we got a request from Who's It Falls Central School Adapt Committee to have a coin drop in the village on the morning of St. Patrick's Day Parade. Uh between the hours of 9:00 AM and noon, proceeds will be, uh will go to providing safe location activities for students who attend junior prom in the evening of June 1st, 2024. They'd like to have volunteers collecting coins at the corners of River Street and Church Street near Stewart's, and the corner of Main and John Street near Iron Coffee and Walgreens. And regardless of the fact that this is a great endeavor, that I support the idea of, we've talked about coin drops uh in the village, and coin drops specifically on Route 22, and I'm pretty sure the last time we discussed this, it was a no-no on a state highway.
I think last time we asked them to change the date, because.
Yeah, did you wanna have it on parade? We had a, we had some, oh, the, the, gosh, yeah, we had, I think we didn't have the authority to say they could do it.
Right.
On 22.
Steve says no.
And they did it on a different day.
Right, but I can tell you, that location of Main and John Street is not conducive to tractor trail tracks.
No.
Please don't contract that on a quarter of a day.
Yeah, it is not.
So generally, what's the thought of the board? I mean, we can't, that location won't work, cause it's just too, it's too congested.
Well, the date, that date doesn't work either.
Okay.
Great day, that's not a good day.
So should we?
The parade starts at, the parade starts at what time, Kevin, time, right?
I actually feel like the parade would be a good time for it, because the, the regulations essentially say that you're not supposed to have it where it's stopping traffic where traffic would normally be flowing.
Mm-hmm.
But if roads are blocked off or traffic is flowing slowly because of parade, it might actually make more sense to do that than on a regular day.
Except it's in the parade route.
Then after the parade, it's back to normal.
Then at 9:00 AM to noon, the parade's at 10:00 AM, right, Kevin?
No, the parade's, parade's at 1:00.
1:00. Oh, 1:00, I'm sorry.
But even so, there's, there's a lot of people coming and going.
It's a high traffic time, so it's a high risk time, yeah.
It's a very busy day.
Yeah, but it's also a high traffic time for them, that's why.
That's true.
Right, you're also, you're also putting, you know, there's people drinking all day at the same time, and you're gonna be putting people. Right, you're also at, you're also putting, you know, there's people drinking all day at the same time and you're gonna be putting people in the street, I don't think that's a good idea at all.
Maybe that's why they were thinking earlier in the morning.
Not on that day.
Cause they are asking.
You can't drink all day if you don't start in the morning.
I have, oh my gosh, alright, students are not hearing anything.
Consider this party your strong.
Drink responsibly.
I don't drink.
That is, that's true. Um, so we're, a- as a collective, we're generally okay with this, but not on that day for a lot of safety considerations.
Yeah, I think, can we just refer back to whenever, you guys remember when it was? We can, whatever we did then, we should do again.
The last time they did it, I think it was um Jackie Hope.
No, it was um, the last time was, recently was Little League, wasn't it, Little League or uh.
Yeah, but it was Memorial Day weekend, so living, that's when they did it.
Yeah, so it was Memorial Day weekend.
Was it okay with us to do that on this day?
I think, I think the gist is we're o- okay with it in concept, but we gotta find a better date, right?
A but, a different date.
A different date.
We can't give you authority to do it on.
The Russell did it.
Well, I think we can recommend that they do a different day.
We don't even, we don't have any say anyway, it's a state highway.
Right, it's, we have no control of Route twenty two.
So how do we?
You can only recommend.
We could rec.
In the past, they just show up and do it like the Russell did.
Okay.
I think the state, the state law says you can't.
That's right, I'm sorry.
They still did it that way.
You know what, if we didn't make a recommendation or say anything and something happened to somebody, I would feel terrible. So if we could at least make a recommendation for them to do it in a different place or a different date, I would be able to sleep at night.
Elena Cox, from the legal point of view?
From a legal standpoint, I don't think that they can do it, like, I don't think we can give them permission to do it at the location that they're proposed on.
Yeah, because it's on twenty two.
Right.
Alright, uh, maybe I'll circle back with Elena and we'll get a nice response that.
Sure.
Makes sense and checks all the boxes it needs to, that says this is a great idea, but here's the tickle that we're in, so.
You've gotta go to school every day, we don't.
I, I do, that is, that is true, okay.
And it is such a good cause.
It is, it is.
It is a great cause.
Alright, uh, I have two quick updates, uh, or no, not, well, this is kind of both in the uh. Um, announcements and the updates, I miss something?
Oh, no, you were about to say it then.
Okay, so this kind of is a combination announcement, combination update. Um, on October twenty fourth, which I feel like is uh Tuesday. Um, at six PM at Who's Falls Central School in the auditorium, the Community Participation Work Group, which is um. The group who oversees a lot of PFOA related water issues in the village and the town, advocates and listens to people. Um, they are having a informational get together at six PM in the auditorium. Um, at that auditorium, I will be there as mayor to say a few things and put the meeting in context. I think the town supervisor may also be at that meeting. Um, and we're both, well, we're also in the, the work group in the se- itself. Um, but this is a chance for everyone to hear and um where things are at in terms of. The pursuit of getting the new water source hooked up and online. Um, get to see some pictures on where things are at, where they are on the deva- design phase, where they're looking at to be on schedule and and that sort of thing. Uh, it's also a chance to ask uh questions, there's gonna be uh DEC representation there, DOH I think representation's there. Um, the companies uh and their consultants are going to be there and they're gonna talk significantly and have some slides about where things are at. Um, it's, I think a lot of the focus is on the new water source, um, but there's also a chance to discuss a lot of larger things, so I'm hoping that. People can consider coming out to see that, if they have questions on how things are going, uh, it's also a chance to ask about that. Um, and I, and trustees, I do have, um, I got a little bit of an update from um my contact at Honeywell. About that, uh, about where they're at, and they're just about to finish the ninety percent design phase. Uh, for this new water line and the two pumps getting uh connected to the village municipal water supply. Once they have the ninety percent phase done, the village will review it with our uh engineers and attorneys, and that's all covered expense wise with the companies. Uh, DEC and DOH will review it and they'll get comments and their goal is to have the final, um. I don't know where I put my pad of paper, uh, their goal is to have the final um schedule done. The, the final design done in early January, and they're still thinking that uh if everything goes. Properly, they're gonna be putting things out to bid November, December, getting bids approved around February, March of next year and in, starting in mid-April, hitting the ground running, putting in. Um, the various infrastructure, so everything is still pointing to that, but one of the things that they brought up is that there's three permits. That uh the village is going to have to sign off on. Uh, it's a water withdrawal permit that's specific to DEC. It's a, a DOH approval permit for plans for water supply improvement, and there's actually an Army Corps of Engineers permit requirement. For drilling under the river as part of the project. Um, and because we are going to be the ones who own these locations as a village and all the um, the. Infrastructure that goes with it, we have to be the one to sign these permits, Dave Engle gave me the heads up that this was coming, and Honeywell also, um. There's extra chairs up there if you guys need, uh, gave me the heads up that this was coming, so I'm looking for a motion tonight, which I'll do later, unless I just do it now. Um, to authorize myself to sign those permits, because they are going to need the permits back by the middle uh to late uh of, of, end of next week. So I don't know if you guys wanna do the motion now, I have it built in later if you wanna do it, do you wanna do it now?
Sure.
Alright, so let me just jump to that point so you guys can see the motion. Uh, where are we? Oh, I guess I just gotta zip through it this way. No one left. That's broken, okay, well, anyway, we're gonna get to that in a minute, um, the motion that we need is. Uh, oh yeah, I have it there, motion to authorize the mayor and trustees to sign, um, nope, that's not the one, this is not one that's on the agenda.
Oh shit, I don't know. Okay.
This just came in today, I'm sorry, um, here it is. Um, looking for motion to authorize the mayor to execute such application forms as required by New York State DEC, New York State Department of Health. And the Army Corps of Engineers for the new water supply and associated infrastructure. Can I have that motion? Thank you Bobby Decker, thank you uh da- everybody basically. Um, any further discussion on this? I would have given you more heads up, but it literally came over the past couple of hours.
So should I do Decker and everyone?
Uh, no, do uh Dan, cause he moved first. Um, a- all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstentions, carries, I'll leave that up so you can copy that over.
So when they do put the water lines up, where are they gonna take them up, uh twenty two?
It's going to go, and they, part of the ninety percent design is gonna have the specs on where that's gonna go. And there may be a slight adjustment based on some sort of strange kind of land thing that they're still working on, the final details on. But it's gonna go up twenty two and it's gonna cut right before the Falls diner. And then it will go under the river and come out near the greenway where we already have some existing pipes that they're gonna patch in.
So it's not gonna dig up the new pavement, they just uh put that.
Ah, it may, it may.
That's bad planning.
It is, but you know, when entity A isn't discussing to entity B and all the plans that they have. I saw them start twenty two and I was like, why are they doing it this year, or is this all just gonna be ripped up in a year, and everyone knows this, but.
That was gonna be, that was a whole thing was ridiculous, it, uh, the length, the time it took to finish that, it was dangerous too.
It was, I know the town supervisor had to take some questions on that, but this was all out of our hands too, cause it's all state, it's all state glorious stuff. Um, so I don't know exactly when, uh, um, I haven't seen the actual specs yet and I've had a couple of people ask me on that, are you done with this? Um, so I am assuming that tho- that will be figured out and I'm hoping it doesn't rip it up. Um, one of the questions they actually had that they came to us about was, uh, what would, if we had a spot to put some of the fill. That they're gonna have digging up, it's a lot of sand and just sort of soil stuff, and I've already thought of a couple of spots in the village, I spoke to Kenny about where we could do it. Um, one of the ideas that I had had and I gotta go through a couple more sources is down by the youth football field, that way. Um, there's some spot past the field goal, the wooden field goal, that we could expand a little bit more that way, and we could expand the sideline a little bit more away from the greenway. That would just give them a little bit more space up there to kind of center the lines and have more space on each side. I thought that would be an easy spot to do it and Honeywell seemed very content to, if we could get permission to do that, put it there, and they would even. Bring some sort of flat machine to roll it over and prepare it, and that would be a nice project for next year.
Cool.
So, we have some ideas, we have some other ideas too, but.
Good, is it like, um, could you use it at the um Hall Street property for to?
Yeah, yeah, one of the, the questions is of where floodplains are and aren't, cause that may change what we can and how much we can put there, but it's, it's gonna be a longer conversation I have to have with like DEC. Um, but I'm very willing to have that, cause I think there's like four different spots we could all probably come up with where we could use fill.
Speaking of Hall Street, people are starting to use that as their own parking lot, so. Can we post signs, I don't, not that it really matters, but.
I'm gonna add that to my priority list for what we're talking about later. Uh, I will do that. Alright, so, uh, that kind of finishes off that, um. What's that?
A vote on the motion?
Oh, did we not vote on it?
We did.
I'd have a motion in second, I didn't.
No, we, we all, you, you asked, you asked us all, yeah, you did.
Oh, we.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, you did, so I said, I wrote down.
Let's do it again, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye. I wrote down all ayes, you said it.
Uh, abstentions or opposed? Okay, I think, I, I think I've forgotten, just got, got yapping, so. Alright, so I have this and um I got to see this live, this was the beginning of the track meet of the Varsity, um. Squads who came and used the greenway yesterday. Um, there was Berlin, we're the red team, the Who's Falls Tamirac teams in red, Blues Who's Valley, there's Berlin there, there was a charter school there, I think Greenwich was there as well. Um, what a cool use of our greenway, I was so excited to, to see that happen and. The track coach over at school, uh, Mrs. Weber designed the track, and on paper, I was like, I don't even know what is going on here. But she basically designed a mile and a half loop, which is what the run is for the modified squad. And then, uh, for the Varsity, they do a five K, which is like three point two or three point three, something like that. So they just did the one point five loop, a small extra bit, and then the one point five loop again, it was perfect, so. Um, was very excited to see that happen, there were a lot of, uh, a lot of people there, a lot of parents there. I got to uh spend some time with um our new AD at the school, Coach Lilac. Uh, and it was great to see all the people there, and that's just an- another couple perspectives of how many people ran the Varsity one, so it was a really nice turnout and really cool to see, so. Thank you board for supporting that. Uh, actually, it was a Who's Falls Tamirac, uh, um, guy who won, uh, Tamirac student was first, it was a pretty ridiculous, like. Sixteen or eighteen minutes or some ungodly thing, it would show off, yes, there, so. Well done track team, so that was great, that was great, very glad to see that, and I think the school and the village are gonna start talking about some other improvements we can do to work together to. Continue to improve that, so.
It'd be nice if the, if the road races could incorporate the greenway into those. I, I, I really think some of those, the routes they're taking are very dangerous, coming down.
Through the road?
If somebody comes find out the hill road someday and there's people coming around that blind curve.
Yeah, yeah, one of the uh questions that was brought up by the Tamirac. No, one of the other coaches, is the possibility of getting a, almost like a ceremonial five K with all the schools together in the village. To do that, I'm like, hey, we're, we're, we're primed to do five K, we're, we're used to doing it, it's part of what we do, so, there may be future requests on that.
Cool.
So, alright. Okay, we are at the people to be heard section, just as a reminder, when you're called upon, please begin with your uh full name and street address. Uh, you can share and speak to whatever you would like to discuss, and I'll just get a quick idea to see how many people are here. And then I'll set a time limit, just as a reminder, we do record, all audio, audio record all of our meetings and post them on YouTube later for your listening pleasure. Could I have an idea of how many people would like to speak to the board tonight? One person, alright, five minutes, please take it away.
Alright, my name is Jonathan Downer, I own a, well, my mom owns a property at one fourteen Church Street. And me and the code guy is not getting along, and I don't know what to do from here, he's recommending an architect and I don't see why. He's came in to do a ROP inspection and he mentioned a couple of things. I've got those sorted out and fixed, and then he comes in and he mentions a couple more things and. He, first he was saying that it is a commercial property and it's residential is what I think, and. I was like, no problem, he told me to update the heating system, the plumbing and the electric. I did so, he told me to put the doors facing outward with pushbars on it, I've done that. Then he came back, he told me something about insulation, I told him I'll do blow-in insulation, and he just keeps telling me get an architect involved and. He hangs up the phone, he don't return phone calls, he texts when he feels like answering back. I really don't know what to do from here.
Uh, are you the mother?
No, I'm, is Aunt, I'm just here for more.
Oh, is your mother here, cause I had, I had a phone call conversation with her.
Did you?
She was supposed to send me some of the, the record on things. She had, she had uh said she would send that, so what I had told her on the phone, um. Is, is, and I'll just kind of simply repeat it here, um, what Mark does as code enforcement. Um, there's a line between he can come in and inspect things and make some recommendations versus if there are larger things. He can't be the one to literally list out every single thing, come up with a plan, and we've had occasions in the past with really large projects, whether it's a whole building. Or a multi-floor, completely taking things off, or redoing systems like electric, like plumbing, uh, where there just has to be a professional who can come in. Put it out on paper and present the plan. In one situation, it's putting all of the burden on Mark to come up with all of the things that have to be done, which is technically not Mark's job, on the other hand. By having that work done and presenting it to Mark, Mark is able to review all of that and comment on it, so. He walks the fine line, and I think pretty well, between trying to give all the pointers he can versus doing all of the work that other professionals. Should be doing, but, um, and that's, that's kind of what I, what I told your, with your mother on the phone as well.
Okay, so he's like, he's looking for an architect, but we're not rearranging anything, he's looking for a blueprint. And what we're doing in each apartment, I gave him a breakdown of everything we were doing in every apartment, and that's how. We came up with a number of how much we were sinking into the building, and that's how he issued the permit. Otherwise, how would he issue a permit if he didn't know how much money we were sinking into the building?
Well, the permit is not based on what financially you're doing, the permit is based on all the things that he has to check off to make sure that things are done. Right and appropriately, and especially in the past several years in New York State, we've had situations where. Inspectors have been letting things go that they shouldn't have, and that has come back as a liability issue on the village, so. We want to support, as a village, we like to see people investing in properties and bringing them back up, there's no question of that. But we also have to make sure it's, it's done the right way, um, and that for us isn't like, well, you hit a certain money quota or. We understand this is what you're hoping for or thinking, but we have to go by the books on that, do you wanna add anything?
Uh, I think I've put everything down that I need to on paper, um, you know, it's.
And I did tell your mother, what's that, I'm sorry?
In his letter, he's talking about the electric and the plumbing, it's like, we did PEX plumbing, that only came out forty years ago, so. Obviously, we did that, we got a whole new water meter, your water department came, they couldn't turn on the water if we didn't update the plumbing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, he never went to the basement, so he would have seen that, and then, um. We have electric that got inspected, otherwise electric wouldn't have been turned on, he mentions that. He don't know how we got the electric turned on, it's like, well, there's stickers on the meters that did get inspected, and the ones that didn't get inspected are still red tagged and all. Um. So I still don't see why I need an architect though, because we're not moving no walls, we're, we're just. Building what is there and fixing what is there and bringing it up to code is what we're trying to do, but he just keeps saying he wants an architect, I don't see why we need one.
Well, as I said to your mom on the phone, I'm very glad to sit down and go over the record. And try to explain anything else that needs to be explained and give more context to why this is the recommendation, um, and.
I believe they need assistance in, uh, you know, we have a, um, an engineer study who that went in and looked at the building, there are issues with the building. And the workmanship that I see to date does not match what the engineer was describing. And I decided that it was time to put the brakes on the project, I need, I believe they need some assistance in doing an overall, uh, building update, so. I stand, I, I stand by my decision, I tried to express that, I, I put it out there, it's not going to change because. The, uh, the engineer's report is very clear. Those things all need to be addressed and the workmanship that I was seeing to date were more, uh, it was not addressing some of those concerns, so.
Do they have a copy of the engineer report?
They do.
We do.
Okay.
And all it talks about is nothing structural, it talks about the heating, the plumbing, the electric.
That's not true.
And a bad, a bad spot, I have a, I have it here.
This is not, and I don't think this is the.
Yeah, no, I understand that, and as I said to your mom, I'm very glad to go over this and sit down with you guys, this is a, business meeting is not the time. Not to say it's not a priority, it's just isn't the right sitting, I'm very glad to sit down with you guys and look through this and, and see what, you know, the difference is. He's saying the engineer report is saying this, you're saying the engineering report is not saying this, it's very simple to sit down and try to figure that out.
Alright, so when's a good time to sit down and figure this out?
Um, let me give you my email address.
Alright.
And you can either email me, I'm gonna give you my office number as well, and we will try to find a time next week.
Alright, perfect.
Does that work? Does that work? Alright. Wrong number. This is what happens when I have many numbers and work in different places. I almost put down my school number. And my home number, which is also similar. Alright.
That's about all she told us, so we're thinking during the time.
Yep. Here you go.
Alright, thanks sir.
Yep, thank you guys.
Enjoy your night.
You too. Anyone else? Okay. We are going to move forward. Okay, uh, reports, we actually are down a couple people who normally would be here tonight, so I will paraphrase all the stuff on the police report for our our chief who's under the weather tonight. Um, you guys have the reports there, fourteen arrests, uh, and you can read all the details there, um. Four hundred eighty-nine calls for the month, four hundred seventy-five handled by the village PD. Uh, fourteen other calls were handled either by Rensselaer County Sheriff's or New York State Police. Uh, we also assisted outside the village with eighteen calls. And um, I didn't get mileage uh, counts this time from the chief, but they recently were serviced, all the vehicles have been serviced. So that's good, they're all in working order, and there's probably gonna be two vehicles that need uh, new tires for winter. Yes, Deb?
Um, the the um, the dead police car, the one that you, Mark, you used to use?
Yeah, I'm supposed to get it, that's on the address.
No, no, not empty, but people are asking me, whoa, they never have parking, and why is that thing always parked there?
Um. I talked to Kenny about getting rid of that, so I don't know why, I'll circle back, it's it's the old, what's that?
What was that question?
He's threatening me, he's threatening me to get my stuff out, so.
Oh, okay.
I have, yeah.
It's the old SUV over by the uh, by the villa, by the wood park.
Oh, no. They call it code code officer, you know, that, you know, that storage units.
A bad vehicle.
Alright. We'll uh, we'll we'll hide your chair until then, no, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, alright, yeah, please take care of that, then we'll circle back with Kenny. Um, other items, uh, let's see here, hundred eighty-nine traffic stops past month with over a hundred uniform traffic tickets issued. Interestingly enough, six of those stops were all uh, started as infractions, but then led to arrests for either having a suspended license or no license at all. Um.
Can we um, just a question on that, can we ask the chief to also let us know on a monthly basis how many tickets issued actually didn't get thrown out by the court?
That's probably a court question, but that being said.
He would know, he would know.
I have, I have, yes, they have gone to court, yeah.
I can find out, I can find out. Um.
I have the next one.
On, tickets, yeah, that's a good thing to know, I did hear from both the chief and I think from Officer David separately, that a lot of those tickets at court recently
It doesn't, yes, it doesn't, yes, I do.
Were handled, paid fines or whatever, there were very few ha, um.
Yeah. We we need, we need to talk about that.
The last time. But we'll talk about that more.
We'll talk about that.
Okay. Thank you.
I have some information regarding that.
Um, other items, there's September ninth motorcycle benefit that uh, started at Iron Coffee and the October seventh uh, Stephen Colvin Memorial Five K Road Race, October seventh were great, I didn't hear anything about the Steve Colvin race except it went.
Great, I was in it.
Well attended and everything seemed to work great, which is awesome.
Very good.
Um, uh, they did uh, use the inside of the police station for an independent horror movie to be filmed on September twenty-ninth. The chief had asked me about that, and I gave him the okay. Uh, nothing big, but they got to use that, and that was kind of a neat thing, and maybe they'll be back in the village to do more, so. I thought it was kind of a neat request for them just to use the room there to just film a couple angles of it.
Which room?
Uh, they used in, a part of inside of the police department, they're basically just like people sitting in a desk, that's that was basically the context. Nothing gruesome or crazy, it was just dialogue at a desk, but nothing super exciting, but I thought that was kind of a cool thing to do. Um, the chief did reestablish contact uh, with associates at Unity House. Um, participated in blood drive at the Baptist Church, um, four officers and some members of the community did receive Narcan training on September fourteenth. And uh, that we were given ten boxes of Narcan along with the fentanyl test strips and the xylazine test strips, I guess that's how you pronounce that one, that's a new one to me. Um, but interestingly enough, county residents can text the word Narcan to the number two one zero 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 and arrange for Narcan to be delivered to their doorsteps, which I thought that is pretty cool. I'm gonna try that out. Um, several grants came in over the past few months, we just uh, got a third one announced, it's uh, four thousand dollars to cover um, partial payments for getting new bulletproof vests, which is really sweet. Along with the other two we had gotten uh, previously, one for um, replacing the LiveScan machine and one for child passenger safety, so I'm glad that um, Chief Collinary and Officer Hudson, who took the lead on the technical side of that, were involved in that, and they're still looking into and going for grants for license plate readers, in-car cameras and body cameras. And that's a police report, and I am not the chief of police, but I can do it anyway, any questions on that?
Um, I just have one question.
Sure.
That the the Rensselaer County Sheriff's Department has a, a speed uh, a radar machine uh,
Oh, shoot.
up by on Ball Street Extension, it's been there for over, almost a month now, and it's never worked once.
Somebody.
It's not working that often.
And I, I had at least one person possibly to ask me about that.
What's that?
Oh, yeah, I've had a couple.
It's not, it hasn't, last three weeks it hasn't been.
No, probably the solar can't, probably it's not.
Oh, the thing's down, and the 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 screen has been put down, it wasn't even, it it's not even. It must not.
It was working, but then it stopped, and it hasn't been working since.
Yeah. Cause like, the last three weeks it's been faced down, that's why.
Can you make a note of that for me to follow up?
I was just wondering if if, who put it up there, I guess.
It wasn't us, it wasn't us.
No, that's why I was just curious, that's why I wanted to ask Tim where it came from, that's all I was saying.
Alright, I'll I'll follow up with Tim on that.
Where did it come from?
Absolutely better spots for that.
Alright.
River Road, River Room, they've been asking for it.
Alright. Yes, they have been, be great to get over there, any other questions? Looking for a motion to approve the police department report?
I'm making it.
Thank you Bobby.
Second.
Thank you Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed abstentions? Carries, uh, code enforcement report. Mark?
You guys have my report, I don't know if you have any questions or anything.
I have a question. So, I mean, I've checked the number of the building, but the one on Church Street used to be a pizza place, whether it was a fire.
Fifty-nine.
Thank you. Dude, we talked about ordering a window for that, right? Didn't we?
We got a price on it.
We did?
Yeah, it was like seventeen hundred dollars. They had to do it in two sections, maybe a twelve hundred, it was a kind of price difference.
Two sections because it's too big, right, yeah.
Yeah.
It was like two sections, it had to be on.
Ooh.
And if I'm correct, we would have to approve that, take the initial hit and re-leve it to the county when they don't pay it, cause they're probably not going to. So we have to decide if we wanna do that.
And there's only one bid, cause it's a special fee thing?
We have to.
Well, I just reached out to get a price, get an idea, you know, if you wanted to do it, we probably have to.
Kind of think we have to do it.
Yeah, I mean, the other option is we could plywood it and make sure it's in alignment with the law from twenty-eight.
It already is plywooded, and it looks like.
About, why would you, why would you?
But it's it's not, it, there's there's requirements on color and paint and that sort of thing. Um, that's another cheaper option, our guys could do it and we just charge hours and cost, is that an option we could do later? If we wanted to?
It looks terrible.
I I was talking to Mark, what was the?
It's a building right on Main Street that the window was broken.
I heard that, what what do we wanna do?
Church Street.
Uh, Church Street, sorry, put plywood over it, paint it so it's in the proper color according to our local law on basically plywooding off things.
As opposed to putting new glass in there, would cost a lot of money.
Or we drop seventeen hundred to two thousand on it and get made whole later by the county.
Is there no window there?
You gotta do that.
No, it's broken.
Yeah, it's just.
It's now they have a.
Like, there was something covering it.
Yeah, plywood, it looks like awful.
Looks terrible.
Yes.
I think you, I think you gotta put glass.
Our local law says that all boarded up windows must be painted a neutral color.
That's the, that's the wording, I remember that.
What's neutral to that, you know, it's like, what's neutral?
Well, like a gray.
Gray or.
Looks like.
Yeah.
I think you gotta.
Get somebody to paint it.
So, what what do you guys think, and?
I think you put glass in it.
I think you put glass.
Isn't that the same building we put the roof on?
Yep.
Yeah.
So, if we're gonna, if we're gonna invest the money to put the roof on, why wouldn't you invest the money to put the window on?
Yeah.
Especially we're gonna get the money back at some point.
Right.
So, Elena, procedurally, should we just?
I get it, I get it.
And so you told Mark you could get a couple quotes instead of going up to bid.
Okay, great, okay, so that's the direction that we would like to go in, so that's done.
Yeah, I don't know that there's a lot of people who make companies that make windows, I think. I just remember John, when Janet had to replace hers, that she had she had trouble finding someone, so that might be the only place.
Yeah, I don't know, I just.
I don't know, that's what I heard.
I initially, I called Seal White, just asked them when they're in the area to give us an idea what it would cost for, I said, Ed originally came out on a Sunday. Uh, that was smashed, um, out of a rock, in Dauphin or what, but. So Ed, uh, Granger came up, cleaned it up, and it was, I would not.
Yeah, I got a question, it was an emergency repair.
Did that get billed, did that, did, did that get charged to their account as well, that repair?
I believe so.
Good, okay.
We got to check with Denise to be sure, but I'm pretty sure.
Can you just make a note to follow up on that with Denise, make sure that got charged to the account? Okay, yeah, Bobby?
Thank you, Mark.
Avlon Spring Street, I don't know if you wanna call that, it's probably pretty dangerous, kids, and now they broke it almost out of the windows. You know, they're in and out of there, I I know you know this, I don't know if you wanna, I don't even think you can do anything about it.
Well, we can take it, we can look at, and then take it to the next level and.
Yeah, it's county owned, right?
Uh.
This says bank owns, banking.
Well, last, last I knew it's bank, I have not looked at that property in a while. Oh, like the insurance, like the windows are smashed, I mean, structurally, it's not falling down. That front kitchen is, that part is done, but the rest of the house is not gonna fall down.
Yeah, it's water damaged, everyone.
Right, well, that whole front addition, that's sunk, I don't think anyone's gonna buy it though.
Well, look, if we want to consider that it needs to be taken down, we can approve an engineering, uh, engineer to come in, like Bill Cottrell that we've used in the past to do a a a look over.
It's far from being, it's structurally, it's sound, the main part.
And uh.
It's just the glass. I've been in it, there's a lot of glass, they broke, they've stolen wire and.
You know, we can uh, hire somebody to come and and board everything up, you know, to secure it.
Yeah, I was just wondering what you thought.
Do that, um, no, it's it's probably, we should do something instead of leaving it, so it's.
I, I.
Some kid.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah.
Mark, it's a major problem.
Yeah, easier said than done.
Eddie McGuire, he does it all the time, for example.
Yeah, he's done a few.
Yeah, it's fine, I'll get that.
What do you guys think best action is on this?
Maybe looking at it through the vacant building registration that we just did, to see what we can do, we gotta make sure the bank still owns it and go from there, but.
Yep. Okay, if not, is it a possibility of bringing someone in like Ed Granger to pay and board it up and charge it, that that's also an option?
Yeah, we should, we probably should secure it anyway, so.
Alright, so I say pursue the vacant building registry first and I, either way.
We'll do something both.
Okay. Do we need a motion on that, or that's a, that's enough?
No, that's perfect, perfect.
Perfect. Any other questions for Mark?
What's what's the drop dead date for Daniel's building to be demolished?
Yeah, we can, we can.
Yeah, uh.
Oh, yeah, you can.
That's just, that's just about ready to go up to bid, I worked with Mark, we had.
That has come.
Oh, it has gone up to bid now, okay.
So it's just been up to bid now.
Okay.
We were working just to make sure that there was proper language in the bid specifications to protect the neighboring property owner, since there's that little.
So I have asked them for the bids we returned at two o'clock uh, November, whatever the date is for our next meeting.
Before our next meeting.
November eighth.
And we'll open the bids at two thirty, and so we'll hopefully be prepared, I did get a couple of questions from one of uh, Dan's is looking at it.
Okay. Okay.
And he was up today, he's asking about using, because of power lines, he wants to be able to use the adjacent lot, which is also
Same owner.
was owned by Daniels, I'm not sure, the adjacent lot, that uh, I'm not sure if it was ever built, it was two lots down with the building we took down prior.
Yes.
But I saw on the adjacent lot, he's got his uh, excavator or something there, whatever, lull or whatever it is.
Yes.
He, so that would need to be moved or scrapped.
It's a snorkel, I think.
Yeah, whatever, so it hadn't, it's been there, there's some lumber, he said there, um, but he would need to come at the building we wanna take down from that lot.
Would that fall under the junk vehicle law?
I was just gonna make that point, because the junk vehicle law isn't just vehicles, it includes basically anything with a motor that doesn't run anymore.
And he would, he would take it, if we, you know, if we can get our ducks in a row in time to.
Okay. Let's talk later this week about pursuing that.
I'll I'll double check that, just to be sure, but I'm very certain.
Thank you. Alright.
Yeah, just on that same property, my understanding is there's a lot of taxes owed on it, and I'm just wondering what the process would be for the county at some point to pay a close on that.
So Elena, this is generic question about when there's a a property that has owed three years taxes, four years taxes.
Usually it's four years.
What's that?
Usually it's four years.
Rensselaer County can be like five or six, we're thinking the same thing. Um, once that happens and it goes to foreclosure, the county takes it? Uh, and once that process is done, and we, then, I mean, it's probably could work with the county to to find a way to get the property or something like that?
We're seeing that uh, one, the one, the house that we tore down on Spring Street, uh, that lady's name was in the last report for uh, tax foreclosures. With, I think, the uh, the amount of what it costs.
To demo it?
Re-leve it, you know, where we got reimbursed for it.
Uh-huh. Yes.
So if you look at the amount that she owes, it included that demolition.
Wow, yeah, that property's not gonna sell.
No, it's just a vacant lot right now, so.
Yeah.
It'll sell.
Elena, what were you saying, I'm sorry?
I don't know.
In terms of the um, procedure on this, if there's a property that's been there, like, we have to wait for the county to take it?
Oh, like that's what the, the village wants to either purchase it or get it from the county?
Perhaps.
Yes.
I usually work with the, I don't know what it would be for Rensselaer County Director or Finance or whoever, whoever it is that's responsible for that, and let them know before they
Okay.
foreclose on it, and then usually, usually they work with you.
Okay.
Like, depending on the value, they might just give it to you.
We have had a good working relationship with them when we were going through the Woods Book Buyout Program, we ended up taking a couple properties that way, and it was, they were good, they were very helpful.
I I've been asked this before, but since he owes us this property, I think fifty-nine thousand for the last building we took down. Can't we put a lien against his property to recoup his fines outside of the, the closure?
That, Kevin, that cost got re-leveed and the county made us whole on that. So in that particular situation, we can't, because we already got made whole by the county.
There is just one thing after another and.
Yes.
He's running out of buildings.
And and the ones that are on the blink with taxes are those, I mean, those aren't, those are his too, but they're not, not a lot of money, they must need to land.
Actually, that's just for.
One year.
One year.
That's just a single year of tax.
But there's three, there's there's.
There's three different ones that are substantial amount of money of back taxes, I think it was fifty thousand, fifty-seven thousand.
I'm I'm with you Doug though, I'd I'd love to get that property, that just little area, I'd love to see a municipal parking lot there, it's it's right in the heart of where we need parking.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh my gosh, and then some.
Right, I just wanted, I'm sorry, good, uh, I just wanted to ask you about fifty-nine Classic Street, what the status of that place is?
Uh, I went by there uh, yesterday to see, so he did come to court, uh, he was processed for the warrant. I asked the judge that I I wanted a plan uh, within ten days, he did provide the plan within ten days, which was last week.
Good.
I was by there yesterday, and I don't see anything that's happening with plan thus far, so.
His truck was there, but I haven't seen anything either, yeah.
There's no process, no progress.
He likes his toys, that's for sure.
Was there any fines levied or anything for the judge?
Yeah, well, you know, that part is not done yet.
I just don't understand how you can have somebody with an arrest warrant that's been going on for, I don't know how long this has been happening, and all of a sudden we're working with him, I think you should be fined immediately for what, code violation.
Unfortunately. It's not how it works, there has to be there of finding of guilt or a plea of guilty before fines can be assessed.
Wow. So even if there's code violations? So, so what's the point of of making an arrest warrant on somebody that?
Well, you're asking for proven guilty.
They're bringing it to court.
It gets the process started, but the process still takes time.
No, it was eventually weren't prepared to appear, and you know, so now he's here, it looks like he was him, and you know, when uh, I just got eight back to it, so all this stuff has been processed.
Just the, the other thing is that instead of fixing the window in the front of the building, he he's applied with the window, so. And not, not after a good start.
No. So, Dan, you have a.
Yeah, just I'm talking about the, the second vehicle on that lot. Now that, God rest its soul, the first one's been dug out of the.
Different lots.
Oh.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
No, my second act could be bronzed, I'm gonna put it in the park next, next Halloween.
Um, uh, the local law defines a vehicle as any means of transport or conveyance having wheels originally designed and manufactured to be moved or propelled by any power other than muscular power or to be drawn or towed. A vehicle shall include, but is not limited to, automobiles, trucks, trailers, motorcycles, motorbikes and buses.
It doesn't fall in that category.
It does fall in that category, you got wheels made to move.
Yeah, it does, wheels, wheels.
Doesn't have wheels, does it, it's got tracks.
I can, I can give notice to, uh, you know, anyone trying to sell it.
I mean, that's why we have this law, so we have the procedures laid out to move forward on it.
Or conveyance.
Alright. Alright, thank you, Dan, any other questions for Mark?
I will find a YouTube video of person driving their tractor to work.
Just so y'all know. The two mailing addresses we have for him, none of the mail goes through now.
Yeah, it all bounces back, well, we'll do the same thing we did, tape it to the property, tape it to the, the machine, wherever it is.
He's incognito now, I saw him with a hat down over his head today.
Even on his, um, tax bills, it says the same thing, says, uh, underlivable, uh, peel box not active.
Interesting.
Right, yeah.
No, that was me, they find me in a heartbeat, and then get away with it.
The peel box always bumping, and then lately, it's, it's had a hard, so I started doing it, so he, his address on Church Street, and it just comes back, it's picking up a little bit.
Anything else for Mark? Looking for motion to approve the code enforcement part.
Motion.
Sorry.
Thank you Bobby and Bobby again, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose your abstentions, did this time. Treasurer's report, Denise is not here, is there anything you guys wanna note? There, yeah, sorry.
Good questions, we talked last time about, um, which line of the budget, the, um, money for the gazebo, Christmas gazebo.
Decoration comes from.
Yeah, and, um, uh, I asked, I called her, but I called it too late for the.
Grades and celebrations. Hmm?
Grades and celebrations.
Decorations maybe?
I think it's either, I think it's either that or we have a parks line.
No, I think.
I bet it's in the parks.
And gazebo is part of that, just as Jackson Street is parked, I think it's probably more likely parks.
Can we, can we get a check for Aaron?
Uh.
If it was rising, Aaron's gonna do it.
Yeah, we should be able to do that.
Cause he, the sooner he gets going, this, you know, he's got a lot, he's gotta do it soon.
Can you make note of that for us to follow up with Denise tomorrow on that?
Yep, so.
Unless if you wanna give me a call, I can give it, get it to him or have him come pick it up.
Um, it's a check for, is it, it's, it's who's rising, or is it specifically just to Aaron, who, for decorations?
You can just make it out to Aaron, that's probably easier.
Okay, it's part of our budget line, it's what we do regularly, she'll know, okay.
Yeah.
I, what, I, just on that.
Yes.
I'd like to make a request that we get a quarterly financial report, I have no idea where we are with revenue, expenses, the budget.
Okay.
And it just seems, we just have a quarterly basis break, I don't know what.
I will bring that up and see what we can, uh, we can do, if that makes total sense. Um, she's always available to say where we are in terms of cash flow, but that doesn't answer the question of where we are with budgets, so.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we can do that, is there any particular area, just kind of overall?
Overall.
Okay, alright.
And I just don't, is that done on a, uh, accrue basis or a cash basis? So if somebody doesn't pay their taxes or, or reacting as if they did, or is that outside that budget?
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
Is, is your quarterly report or your financial, is that based on a cash basis or accrue?
I do not know.
I'd like to think it was on, was actually there, not what's so soon to be coming in.
I think it's gonna, yeah.
Yeah, but the, the accrued is also what you owe, so it's not just.
Right.
It's not just who hasn't paid you, but it's.
No, no, right, I mean, I don't think we should be counting who hasn't paid us, that's not, right, I mean, we don't have the money yet, right?
Yeah, but that also doesn't count money we owe or something.
No, 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 I understand, yeah.
I think the final report has to be done accrue, probably did a state controller.
Yes, that I'm pretty sure of, and there's probably regular reports she does already that we, she could just send you, so I hear.
Yeah, I'm sure there is, she has to probably quarterly reports anyway, I'm sure.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright, um, I do wanna highlight one thing at the end, it's actually on the top of the next page, she did speak, uh, with, uh, someone about trying to see if it's worth consolidating all the various bands for a possible annual lower payment, she is looking into that. Uh, there's a pretty significant service fee in the beginning to do that, but it may end up having a long-term cost benefit for that. So, we're gonna hopefully have some more information on that, gonna present that, and that will possibly require a motion or resolution to, to do that. But we'll get more information from Denise as that time comes, cause that'll be a big important decision. Uh, looking for motion to approve the, uh, treasurer's report, thank you Kevin, thank you, I'll give Doug a second, thank you.
Denise, no.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any other voting, aye, approving treasurer's report?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed or abstentions, carries, thank you, clerk deputy clerk report, Clarissa?
Yeah, nothing.
Nothing, ten final readings for closings.
Ten closings, good.
Nice.
Yeah, there's been a lot.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Alright, unless you have a question for Clarissa, I'm looking for motion to approve the clerk deputy clerk report?
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you Doug and Deb, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstentions, carries.
Clarissa, I have one question, just without specific numbers, just kind of, um, estimation, when it, with the dump permits, how many of them are being issued to village residents and what percentage is out of?
Um, I would say it's pretty even compared to like if I get residents versus like out, like out of the village.
Town residents.
Yeah, but I do.
I was just curious if there was a wild disparity between the orange and the yellow.
Yeah.
Alone, do you, do you have to ask, show their ID to get the, I know you know some people, but.
I go on like the honor system, I ask them if they live in, outside or inside, but.
Reason I'm asking is though, some people from Vermont, you know, I mean, if we are getting people from Vermont, they could be getting dump permits
Yeah.
or transfer permits and not be residents.
It's not hard for us to come up with a policy change that requires a form of ID and possibl, I don't know if, if like a copy of a license or something like that would be needed.
Or, or a piece of it, or your address.
A thing.
Live in the building, be in the door of the fault.
Yeah, but, I mean, if we are the ones who require, and we're the bad guy, then she's just doing what she's been told, and, so, I, I have no problem doing that if that's what we decide.
Right.
Well, that can be part of what we.
So keep that in mind.
We definitely need to look at the overall picture.
I still think our problem is just collecting money.
Nah.
They just tell you, I don't pay for these.
I think other municipalities require that you're sticking it fixed to your window.
Yes, cause then you can't give it to somebody else.
Yep, I agree with that, and that's another thing, it's, it's kind of been this way for such a long time, but it just hasn't.
And then keep.
Yo, things need to change.
Some places like a market venue, that's a fact of honor.
Yeah, I agree.
We hate to be the bearers of bad news, but, things need to change, we can't opposite, operate a deficit.
Yep. Uh, I agree, alright, uh, I know Kenny is not here for the highway department report, but, uh, getting to work with them just for, uh, earlier this week as they prepared and made things ready for the track meet, I just, I'm amazed again at what they do and how well they do it and the pride they've taken it. Storm, uh, the wood park looks great, they're just, they're awesome. That's my thoughts on the highway department report, they're awesome.
Yeah, I have, I have a question for highway, I don't know if I can answer it, um, Kenny was gonna get, um, another bid for lighting the poles, electrifying the poles?
I have not heard if he's got one.
I can call him.
Right, cause he had two, right.
There is.
Yeah.
There is one request, I don't have the quote on me, but, um, this wood pile that's right out here that came from the storm,
Mm-hmm.
he did get one estimate, it would cost about ten thousand to have someone come and take care of that, to get it ground down, um, which is.
Get it ground.
Wonder who we got to ask?
Pretty close to what, uh, it normally would be, when we do it every couple of years down at the transfer station, it's like twenty, thirty thousand dollars, but that's a massive pile.
Is that from Jim the stump pack?
Let's check, uh.
I'm not sure.
Did he check with McCray?
It may have been from McCray, I can't remember, he said one, but I asked him to get, like, have him email us the quote.
I think they have, uh, Detroit City Gravel Union does it, but there's Galavan down in Berlin that, uh, takes wood and they grind it into, uh, to make mulch, so that might be a place that might take that.
McCray's do the same thing, yeah.
We should definitely shop around.
Yeah, you gotta.
Alright, so I'll ask him to shop around and get more bids, but it, it is gonna be, I think, the thing we need to get taken care of, so we can get that out of there.
Can we put that in, if it ever is declared state emergency, so we can.
We can tie to our emergency, but I don't know if.
We're gonna get any money, I understand, but it doesn't hurt to try, but.
Oh, it doesn't hurt to try, but yes, we will tie that expense to the state of emergency from the storm, because that's where that came from.
Have we ever looked into getting our own chipper?
Yes, it is an ungodly amount of money.
Is it that much?
Uh.
Cause we're doing stick pickup now.
We already bought it actually.
I think it's closer to like a hundred thousand dollars, more, you think it's? It is, uh, it's so much money, I actually asked Kenny the same thing, and he just laughed at me like, no, that's just, it's just a no.
Yeah, we already bought it.
Right, exactly. We bought an excavator, we bought an excavator, we used like three times, so let's not worry about it.
Maybe we could trade the excavator for that.
No.
Alright. I will, uh, circle back with Kenny, any other questions on the highway department report?
Yeah, um, the leaf pickup, is that on the, on the website?
Yeah. I don't have it on the website yet, leaf pickup is going to start on Monday the sixteen.
It started, right, yeah, it started the sixteen, it's gonna start Monday, right.
Uh, and it will run through the twenty-second, which I spelled wrong, um, uh, November twenty-second, I'll put that on the website.
Just wanna make sure it was on there, that's all.
Yep.
Also, no, no bags, just.
Right, that should be, no bags.
No bags.
No bags.
No bags.
No bags, no sticks, leaves only.
No bags.
Okay, so I'll put that out there, any other highway stuff?
Uh, I think that the, uh, I know the road's been milled, I believe, uh, Wilson Hill was paved today and tomorrow, right, Mark? And, and is it all done today?
Uh, that was the goal that it was done.
Okay, so that, I think we're next in line with, after Wilson Hill, Kenny told me that we're next in line for our paving.
Okay.
Our guys are planning on helping the village find.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, with Hall, okay, I knew that, I know Kenny had told me that, I asked him and.
One thing I did wanna mention, cause I've seen a couple of questions online, I forgot to answer them, one of the big questions we always get is Mechanic Street, which is like, uh, a hot mess of a road, and one of the questions has always been, why don't we use our CHIPS funding to redo that? The reason is, when we went for that grant with Delaware Engineering and the state to do some of our water infrastructure upgrades, one of those is on Mechanic Street. If we use our CHIPS funding to redo Mechanic Street, we don't get to do that for another ten years.
Correct.
By not doing it, it allows us to use that, like, hopefully that grant to do that, so if we don't get the grant, then we can make the decision to do redo Mechanic Street. If we do get the grant, that will be part of the job, which is our end goal, doesn't help us in the now, because it's, you know, all the, so.
Do we have any update on the main street sidewalk work?
It's not done yet?
The one by the, the one by the museum's done, right?
Following up.
No.
I thought it was.
Yes, it was, yes, it is.
No, the one by, uh, across from where the cave-in was.
No, that's not done yet, no, that's, I know, I actually talked to Kenny.
Can we, can we in the future, when we put out a bid, have a, a, a timeline on when these things are accomplished?
Already asked, already asked Kenny about, yes, we can.
Is that something we do?
Yeah, yes, it might, I don't know, the bids, depending on their schedule, but.
Well, this, this one particular piece was, uh.
Bid last year.
Two years, eight years ago.
Yeah, it was last year, yeah.
Okay, that's a good point.
And there's plenty of people out there that do concrete work.
That's the problem, you're right Kevin, the problem is, we did get, there are other people bid it, but the price is like almost twice, is what, that's the other issue too.
Alright.
Yeah, but we can't, these things.
No, I, I, I agree a hundred percent, and I've been following up with Kenny on it, and he don't, I'm going to.
Keep, keep doing it. Alright, looking for motion to approve the highway department report?
Uh.
I'll make it just.
Alright, and Dan second, Bobby Decker and Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose your abstentions, carries, I'll do the steward department report as well for Kenny, it's right there, any questions?
No.
Nailed it.
I'll make the motion accepted.
Thank you, need a second, thank you, whoever you wanna give that to, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose your abstentions, carries, water department reports.
Excuse me.
Yep.
Why is there, why is there no September numbers in there?
Yep, and all, so we use that water.
I asked both them and Denise and didn't get an email response, so I am throwing them right under the bus on that, or maybe I missed it.
And do we. And do we have any idea whether this might be, whether we're leading our goals and raising rates because we raised our projections of revenue, I don't know.
That's where that survey report is.
I would have to look at the water bills to see how that worked out, I will, I will find out about that for a quick.
Cause it's only been in effect for one water billing.
We just, didn't they just do a bill?
No, one, right, one, the August one, they say the first one was the August one, the, the April one wasn't.
That was the one, that was the one. Oh, you know what, we may not know yet, because when did the, there's still time to get in the late fee before it be, it becomes re-levered. So Doug, we're not gonna, was it Doug last or was it Kevin last, alright, we're not gonna know until the time period is over for people to pay before it gets re-levered.
They don't get re-levered, they don't get re-levered until, until spring.
But I think, oh, yeah, maybe you're right, I'll find out, I'll find out.
I know I'm right, I, I know I'm right about that, I, I've asked.
We're the expert on that one.
I do know that, um, when the next budget season is coming through, we'll have had two readings done at that point, so we'll be able to look at two thirds of our, our bills and that. Uh, looking for motion to approve their water department reports.
Oh, real quick, Bradley, start yet?
I do not know. I don't think so, I'm not sure, I'll have to find out with them, and they've been working with, um.
Cause he would've wrote it down.
Yeah, there's a few things going on there with the, um, the balance tank and trying to get a plan with that from CT Mail, that's coming. Alright, I'll look for motion to approve the water department report.
Motion.
Sorry.
Thank you, and thank you, it's Deb and Bobby Decker, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstentions, carries. Uh, minutes, we have the August sixteenth regular meeting minutes. Um, no, that's, those are the wrong dates, ignore what I have on the screen, September thirteenth regular meeting, I forgot to change that. Um, do you guys have any things to change on the September thirteenth regular meeting minutes? Hearing on looking for motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion.
Thank you, also Deb and Bobby Ryan, uh, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose your abstentions, carries, and then the September twenty-seventh special meeting minutes. Looking for motion.
Motion.
Thank you, thank you Bobby and Bobby, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstentions, my, uh, minutes had, if a public hearing remained open, sorry about that, we don't have a public hearing tonight. Um, it is seven thirty, this is normally the time where I allow students, if you would like, to, uh, get your papers signed from us. You're always welcome to stay for the whole meeting, as I know it is a riveting time, but you guys can call up to any of us up here, and we'll sign off upon it for you.
We have March done, that's really.
My dad?
What is that?
That's all the reports.
Maybe I have a pen.
Pretty interesting.
There you go.
You can hear it, really? It's really small, look at it.
My pad, yours, sorry.
Oh, you mean when I. Thank you.
Sure, just don't get that in the month.
Howdy.
It's like the health.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Alright, uh, trustee committee reports, uh, we can just go in whatever order alphabetical, so Deb, I guess, you're up first.
I don't have any things to report, I don't think, I've got a couple of questions, which are the uh.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the loading zone would, that we voted into in for uh, by Mariance?
Yes.
Uh, is Kenny work, I should pass it before, is Kenny working on those, did he order them or something or?
Bobby, can you follow up with Kenny on that?
No idea, the, the signs for.
Signs, oh, uh, by provisions, I was a little.
Yeah, we passed that local law.
Yeah.
Do we.
He may have had to order them, I don't know, I don't know how that works.
Well, I'm sure we wouldn't have those in stock.
What's that?
Do, do we close that one, I know we introduced it, did we close that one?
Yeah.
We did.
We, we closed it and vote and approved it.
In Deb, Deb.
Oh, okay.
We adopted that.
What, what do they, what are the signs for loading or?
Load, thirty minute loading on loading zones, I can um, forward him the law. Did that one ever get sent to the state?
Yeah.
Okay, that may even be on the website, of course, the last time I was on the website, it didn't work, Department of State.
Um, and my only other thing is uh.
Yeah.
The fourth ward playground, which I kinda left, all by the wayside with other things going on, plus I'm hoping that I can do some research and stuff and we can really start to make it what it is in, you know, early spring so it's ready for playing.
Yes, yes, yes. Yep, agreed, thank you Deb, Bobby Decker?
Two things first, you get my email?
Yeah, so Elena, that email that I sent you, how, how do we discuss that first off? With the request coming from a board member?
I still need to look into. Or get more information.
Well, I need this done.
I don't know if you wanna.
So one of the.
Well, I can resign right now, resign at the end of the month anyways.
No, that's not the issue, the issue is, i- is there a specific request and what do we exactly have to approve or even do we have approval?
Because it's labeled a notice, so is it just a notice or is it something?
It's a, it's a approval of Two Owls Holdings Incorporated, I just happen to be the president of it.
Mm-hmm.
To get permission to start a business in the village, a dispensary. The application went out, I gotta have it, I sent it by certified mail last week, let everyone know that I needed this, it's part of the application process.
And I have it.
So.
So we don't have to.
I said that last week. Because you have already on here a motion to authorize Emeritus for another LLC to do something. I said last week, listen, if I have to, cuz I'm, this is my last month, if I have to, I'll resign now.
Well, you resigned, you just recused yourself.
Well, that's why I said I'll recuse myself, so.
So yeah, so the, the.
To me, it's just a discussion and an approval like we've done twenty times since I've been on this board, you know?
You resign?
Is that can I ask it?
What's that?
Just like the different candy, some are school five.
I don't understand the issue.
Yes, I'm five.
I don't understand the issue, oh, we've done this for many businesses since I've been here.
So. So, hold on one second, so there's, there's two issues, there's the issue of the request and there's the issue of an active board member is bringing up something and as an active board member, you'd have to be the one to recuse yourself from any discussion of this, so that, that we know, so.
I recuse myself right now. But I told you that last, last week.
Right, right, we understand that, we understand that and you've already.
T-shirt with an R on the red R.
Yeah, so.
Bobby leave the room.
From the point of view of the letter, the request or the notice.
I think you should read it, cuz these guys don't have it.
Do you want me to put it up on the screen?
You should.
Do whatever you wanna do, yeah, I, I mean, I can't give any legal evidence because I'm not, I just received it and I'm not.
To me, it's a, it's a, it's a request.
Up to see on what the requirements are, so I'm certainly could re- but it's a signal tonight.
It's a request that we've had many times from many different.
Yeah, Rob, can you put it up on screen?
I'm working on it right now.
You know, we've, we've approved other things like.
Yep.
Did you send to all of us or just to Rob?
The certified mail letter I sent.
No, the mayor, the email.
I, I, yeah, I can forward it on to you guys, so subject notice of adult-use recreational marijuana dispensary license application. Write informally notified to Claws Municipal Office, sorry, that Two Holdings LLC intends to submit an application for an adult-use recreational marijuana dispensary license within the village's defaults. Uh, committed to, adhering to all local, state and federal regulations governing the establishment and operation. Uh, our proposed dispensary will adhere to all zoning and landings regulations set forth, will also comply with any additional requirements and conditions that may be imposed. Uh, dedicated to engaging with the community and welcome any feedback or concerns that residents may have regarding application. Uh, committed to being responsible and true member of this qualified community, should require any further information to discuss or application in more detail, do not hesitate to conduct, uh, contact us.
Yeah, I don't see a request.
So, what's that?
That's what I was.
I don't see a request specifically in the letter.
Oh, it's.
It's more of a notification.
Um, far down.
Is someone just reviewing it and if you want more information, contact us, right?
Sorry about the scrolling. So I guess the, the, the question that we would have for this entity, of which you're president, uh, is what specifically are you requesting village government to consider? Um, in the past, the requests that we have been, were dictated by the New York State Office of Cannabis Management's and following those pro- procedure, that's the one, or they were, it, letters of support for those requests for um, to be sent to the state, for the state approval on whatever has to happen.
This is coming from the, the board, this is what we have to do, we have to basically get your approval.
For what?
Just to apply, it has to, we have to get a receipt from you saying that the board approves, that we can go ahead and start a business and also before we, we're still looking for a building, that also has to be a part of the application process, but it ends the end of the month.
End of this month.
It might extend into December, but yeah, it's right, it's right now, just opened, um, October fourth.
End of this month.
And it was November third was we had to have it in, but I think they just changed it, I'd have to look for a minute.
So Elena, what, what, what do we need as a village entity to weigh in on this further?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Okay.
So if I'm understanding it, like the application going in, there's a timeframe that you have to have the municipality support the application.
Yeah, like.
But we haven't seen the application.
This in order, right, they haven't come out, but we need this first. I think, I mean.
So you have to get a letter of approval from the village board to submit.
Right, and we're gonna, and there's other things we have to, it's crazy.
But they have to go with it, like it's like cash.
Right.
Okay, so I'm sending this email.
It had to be sent by certified mail, I need the receipt, you know, it's.
I'm sending this to all the trustees and Elena, so you guys have a copy of the letter, Elena, you'll research this and we'll follow up with the president of the LLC organization.
But we can't wait till next month though.
No, it's gotta happen.
Gotta have it.
No, we can't, but the village municipality has ways to get approval and if, if able to retroactively approve it. So we can do that and one of the things we will have to do on this because of just open meetings law and government is
Yeah, I just don't wanna miss.
When we have this discussion, we will start a thread where he is not involved in it as a trustee because he has recused himself from all the discussion.
He's recused, yeah, I have a T-shirt with a big red R.
Right.
So any discussion we have in this email cannot include him as email, in his email, his trustee account.
So we really have a special meeting before the end of the month, if that's the.
Unless we, unless it's something that we.
We might be able to do it via email.
We can approve it over email and then retroactively do it in open meeting in the next just meetings, as we've noted in the past, which is retroactive to this, the date.
Right.
So that's okay to do, okay. So, since.
Yeah, and I'll give you more information tomorrow then.
Alright, and I have.
I mean, I don't think, I mean, I'm certainly in favor of, you know, the board supporting it.
Yeah, the village makes four percent off every sale.
The village has already supported this, so.
Yeah, we already opted in, so we're not, right.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I'm just, real quick, I'm just reading on the office of cannabis control, it sounds like it's just the notification hasn't made, it says.
Yeah, that's kind of what the letter says.
We're seeing the section seventy-six of the cannabis law, not less than thirty days and not more than two hundred and seventy days. Before filing an applicant.
So we may not need anything yet.
Right, I was just notifying you.
Okay.
Right, for uh, several things, it says an applicant shall notify the municipality in which the premises located with such applicants intent to file such an application.
That's what I just mentioned.
Okay.
So you just have to make notification, it sounds.
So that's how we make the letter.
So if we have a letter that, we, we said we have been notified and they're general, we decide generally favorable.
Right, yeah. Right.
Yeah, like a, just a letter for support.
To submitting an application.
And I suppose when we go through the process of buying a building, right, then that.
Regular one.
That's a different issue.
Different approvals then, right?
Alright, um.
Alright, so there was a just notification.
What's that?
Yeah, I was. Yeah, me too, can't happen anytime soon.
Alright.
Can you, the motion to say we've been notified?
And we don't have to, we've been notified, we already got it, so that's fine, so this is good, we hit my two things that were on the agenda.
Would it be, would it be good though that Doug's going to have that in the, in the minutes?
I think so.
Yeah, maybe.
Sure. It's been documented in here and it'll be discussed and, yeah, so those were, I mean, and that checked off the two items I didn't have on the agenda that I need to bring up, so anything else?
Um, well, you guys all know this will be my last month. Move down the village, Dream House, I really like doing this and I think we did a lot of great stuff, I'll miss it.
Bobby Decker, we are sad to see you go, um, how long have you been on the village board for now?
Three years I did.
Three years, that's awesome, um, as with too many trustees, they joined the board only to move out of the village a couple of years later, um, but.
I'll remember town board.
As we have uh, typically done in the past, um, once he changes to his actual location, that's when he has to be off the board, so. Um, Bobby, if and when you definitely are in your new location, shoot me an email and it'll, that'll kind of be the moment where you're officially off, off the board and um, we will uh, at the next meeting from whenever that point is, we will appoint someone to fill your seat for the remainder.
For resignation to be effective, it has to be filed with the village clerk.
But it has to be filed with the village clerk, I've heard.
Right, that's true. Give me a sent a letter.
Thank you.
Little birdie told you?
Little birdie told me.
Send you an email, send another letter.
Email or certified mail?
No.
Uh, just a letter, sign emails to.
I Bobby Decker resign.
Alright, well, when that time comes Bobby, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, appreciate it and uh, we always appreciate people who put their time and energy into this, even though, you know, the pay is substantial, I'm just kidding. It's kind of not at all, alright, thank you Bobby, um, which, which could be your last re- report, thank you, Kevin?
Huzik Rising has a um, fundraiser underway for putting new trees back in Wood Park.
Yes.
Been talking to Alhanan Nursery about not just putting samplings or um, smaller trees, but trees that are fifty-five feet in height.
Already?
Already in the back.
Wow.
I estimate we lost half of our shade trees in the park, the earliest parts of the trees, they provided a lot of shade for band concerts and um, uh, the summer concert series and for other events that are held in the park, it's, it's startling how, how much shade was lost.
It, yeah.
And uh, so far to date, we raised five thousand dollars.
Wow.
How much trees?
Through an online uh, GoFundMe page and we also are taking checks at um, Huzik provisions, if any lost or donated.
I think they're mainly called the tips, yeah.
That's fantastic.
That GoFundMe page hasn't come across my, Kevin.
I've seen it on Facebook a couple times.
I think it's seen inside of more.
What's the cost for a full-sized tree or a tree of that size?
A tree that size is about five thousand dollars.
Okay, look, I, I know some people are gonna be like, we're spending what on a tree, but I have heard so many people who are so sad about the loss of shade in Wood Park and that was before the storm, so.
Yeah, but these are donation, a lot of people, most of donations are people out of, out of town that uh, you know, love Huzik Falls and are.
Yep.
Are giving back, um.
That's awesome.
Jim Gorman who just sold his house down on um.
Center Street.
Center Street donated the money in his nickname with his mother and father who lived there for, for a long time, so that was very nice.
That's cool. That's very nice.
What do they put in cap, do you know what kind of trees?
Um.
Sycamores?
Sycamores and oaks they were talking about, uh, Connor Sutton and I went through the old nursery and looked at a lot of the different trees and.
That's great.
Uh, Alhanan's working with us, so. There'll be some, we won't be paying full price.
Oak trees though? Oak trees are a lot, I mean, that's a lot of work.
Actually, the oak, we have two oak trees in the park now that we planted, uh, Huzik Rising planted probably five years ago.
I'm just thinking cuz of the acorns.
Cuz they only do that once every year, not every year, right?
They're.
Sycamores are made in the maple family?
Yes, most, mostly.
They're not as bad as those crab apple trees that drop those in the.
Oh, I don't want, I don't want trees, I, uh, apple trees, I agree.
Red maples that look beautiful.
Yeah, maples don't last that long, that's a problem.
Yeah, ginkgos.
So maybe what's donating.
No, since, um, sycamores are in the same family as maples, so.
If anybody wants to donate, um, I think the GoFundMe page is open for another couple of weeks at the end of October, so.
Okay. Okay. Elena, is there any issue?
Believe it or not, that's never coming.
With the village advertising the GoFundMe page or do we, as a municipality, kind of need to stay out of that?
Everything does place.
It's for the, it's a private.
It's Huzik Rising, which is a.
C three.
Yeah.
It's a C type chairman.
Oh, not for profit.
Yeah.
Some.
Well, it's for the benefit of municipal.
Yes.
The park, municipality-owned park.
As long as, well. Actually, no, you probably aren't gonna be able to do it because it's legal for a private entity, even if it's a five oh one C three to solicit donations but a municipality cannot solicit.
That's what I was thinking, okay, so we will thank Huzik Rising and Kevin for doing that and unfortunately, we can't go all in on spreading the word.
Also, the trees, we need to hire an arborist and to, to uh, take care of some of the trees that were damaged in the storm. I know that uh, Kenny said they can do some of the work with some help, but uh, really need an, an expert in tree care because there's some that probably can be saved, but there's others that need to be uh, taken down.
Yes. Yeah, I think that's worth it, I mean.
I'm gonna give you my craze card.
I, I wanna go back to the question, I, I'm soliciting and stating the facts in two different things, it seems to me, we can say this is happening in Wood Park, it's being done by Huzik Rising, they are raising money. I mean, that's just stating facts, that's not us saying give money.
We're not soliciting the funds.
No, we're, we're stating what's happening on our own property.
We're making people aware.
And they are doing it, we're letting people know we're aware.
I mean, the. At the end of the day, it's probably not an issue anyone would push, but it's just, it just seems to me like it's a little bit of a gray line that I, as a municipality, I don't wanna go near.
It's not our property.
I don't think so, well, you're just saying, hey, this is what's going on there.
On our property.
You're not saying, hey, if anyone's interested, you know, but it's, hey, these guys are doing this, right?
I think it's also. I think it's also important for people to know it's not the village raising money for it.
Can we come out and say, can we just say we support?
No, not, I don't think we can say we support, I think we state that exists. It's, just state.
I mean, it is already out there, so it's not a huge issue for us to forward it on to the Facebook page or not.
What's the worst-case scenario if someone gets a bug up there, you know what, says the village is soliciting? The village is.
We're not using the, we're not using village tax dollars.
Right, there's no on, on constitutional gifting of public funds or anything like that, what is the worst that could happen with this?
Honestly.
Declaratory judgment in court.
Well, Elena, what's your thought?
I mean, probably be some type of sanction or something for violating the law, but I don't know what it would be.
I can see the state stepping in and having more oversight because we did X and we're not supposed to do that as a municipality, that to me is the biggest risk.
Unless the solicitation isn't asked, it's not that you're stating facts of what's happening.
But it's kind of gray in my mind.
We'll research to it with foundations, municipalities have historic foundations, they state what's going on, I don't think this.
We're forwarding on.
You have to make an ask to solicit, if you're stating this is happening.
Yeah, but. We're forwarding on.
A fact.
Something that's out there that we directly benefit from, that's the problem.
Would.
That's okay, it's a public benefit.
Would it be? To Doug's point, would it be wrong for us to publicly thank Huzik Rising for their.
No, not, there's no issue with that.
Okay.
But there is.
Yeah, we would like to, uh, behalf of the village Huzik Falls, we would like to send, extend, extend our sincere appreciation to Huzik Rising for their effort to replace
Yes.
the park and then put their wire off with it.
Yes, that's good.
That, that sounds perfect.
Dan, I think you wanna write that language and send it to me so I can put that up on Facebook, email that to me right now.
Text me the paper to uh.
Not that part, not that part, alright.
Chat, chat for information.
Chats may be rooted through the village office.
Kevin, anything else?
No, did, we just need to find somebody that uh, has a big uh, bucket truck, a large one, because some of, broke, branches broke off, need to be trimmed off, so.
Yeah.
Uh, there's still some hanging limbs too that.
I got some cards on my truck for the one guy, you know.
Yeah, I, I gave Kenny, um, Brian Purcell and there's this one here.
Okay.
Purcell don't like the answer, I know somebody been waiting for a tree for him for three years. Well, what the hell are you doing? John a tree.
Michael a borer.
Matthew.
Matthew.
He doesn't have a grinder though, that's the problem with him, you gotta have a grinder if you're gonna cut, well, this is just, this is just uh, limbs, right?
Well, we do, we do have the stuff next to the monument.
Thank you.
The cranes will come in and they're climbing bucket trucks.
Alright, we'll, we'll let Kenny move on.
I was looking through the phone bills or the uh, bills and we, we're still paying for Verizon charges on Highway Garage and the water plant, I thought those are going away after a short time.
I will follow up on that. Um, I honestly. I'll follow up on that, it got complicated because it was Verizon and it was Spectrum and it was Magna Five and it was one other entity all overlapping, oh, um, the, who do we do the um, the voiceover IP stuff at the village office, what's the company that does that?
Admins.
No, not that, not Admins, go up, I guess the.
Nextiva?
Nextiva, thank you, so it's, I'll follow up on that Kevin, thank you.
Just, just seems weird to be paying two different entities for, I don't know what the, I don't know what the services are, but.
I know we were.
When we first did it, that was supposed to be the, was, we were gonna save money by getting rid of one of the Verizon charges and they're still there.
Part of the hole up at the water plant was getting the new equipment to communicate with Spectrum, whereas it was originally communicating through Verizon's DSL.
Also too, somebody called the Highway Garage, it's the old number, is that on our website, is the old number?
I will check. That's an easy fix if I can find it. I, I do know that the historically old number is no longer used and we had to switch to a new one, so it's possible that someone who's been using the same number for forty years.
Yeah, someone sent me an, an email and said that they were trying to get ahold of the Highway guy and they called the old number and.
I'll look right now.
I'm looking right now.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you Kevin, Doug?
Um, we got the proposal in on time, Rob had lots of time.
Oh my gosh, that was the most stressful thirty minutes of my life.
Uh, thank you, and um, we have a site visit on the eighteenth at two o'clock, two thirty, three thirty, now and a half, so we have a prep meeting.
Oh shoot.
Monday at five o'clock at Village Hall, to plan the, um, it's gonna be a little complicated because several folks, project sponsors aren't gonna be around. Including the twenty-four center street, you could call and invite everybody to meet at the time and, but he has, clock, half to three o'clock, kindness, so we can have his conversation. And we're going by, he's gonna give us key to visit the areas, so we'll plan it on, on Monday.
Okay, um, I do have the drawings for the municipal stuff, so if you want that for that meeting, I'll, I'll get that for you.
Yes. That'd be great.
Um, his, uh, John Cooney did the design, his plan for the ramp, I'm gonna ask him to modify because we'd originally thought when you're staring at the municipality, put it off to the right, but because of the sheer amount of space he needs, it like goes out into the park and comes back in and that doesn't, I don't think that's gonna work, so I think we should see if we can put it back on the left side. The only issue is there's that green like cabinet thing that's to the left of the stairs, uh, we'll have to kind of see if we can go over, but I'm gonna talk to John about that.
Kevin, are you gonna be around?
Uh, no.
I can probably join in the middle, um, Bobby, we just set up our time for that phone call.
Okay, I really love setting up Wood Park, um, you know, Village Hall, really set up Wood.
Three fifteen.
I did.
Wednesday.
I already.
That's the walkthrough time.
Oh shit.
We may need to, we'll, we'll, we'll circle back on that.
Um, when is it?
May need to make sure a little bit later than that, or I can just join you at two, at, at three thirty if I can be with them for a bunch.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'm just reached out, I just.
We'd like to find out who's coming, cuz if it's, if it's the same people last time, it'll be a, a different kind of tour than if it's two people that haven't been here before.
Right.
I don't know, I can.
I can find out, I can find out.
Okay, we can find out, that's critical to the, to the sales.
Sure, yep, I'll find that out. Anything else? Alright, thank you, uh, Dan?
Oh Doug, I had one, the, the root, you're gonna, so you wanted me to have Kenny clean up like the walkthrough route?
Yes.
Can you give me the walkthrough route so I can give it to Kenny?
That's.
You'll have it after Monday night.
Yeah, I'll have it after Monday night.
Okay, well, okay, I'll be.
I can do it, I can generally do it, I just won't know the order.
Okay.
Okay, so I can give you that tomorrow, I can send you an email.
Okay, just, I, I reached out to Kenny today once and he said, no problem, I just, I gotta give him the, the root, that's all, a ballpark anyway.
Alright, anything else?
No, definitely.
Alright, Dan?
Uh, nothing on the, the local law, but Dan and I have some things we're gonna be talking about, so hopefully we'll have something next month on a few issues, um, that probably won't be addressed. Uh, the other thing is during the, um, CSE contract negotiations, we had talked about, um, a Medicare Advantage plan for retirees. But there was complication there in so much as that you must have group retirees on the plan at all time, at all times. In the event that you drop below three, the other two will be notified at the end of the plan year.
Oh, it's four.
No, three.
It is three, okay.
Yeah, it's three, yeah.
Last question.
Otherwise, it's not a group plan, right? I guess it could be a group of two, uh, but most of the plans, you gotta have three, um, that's, so. One of the ideas is to do, the, the town has some retirees, um, the people that are, will be retirees in the near future. And, uh, we may be able to look at a joint venture, at least get a price on it, see if it's something that's even feasible with the town, um, and so I, I talked to Mark and we're gonna see if we can get a.
I brought it up to the board last night, so they're open, they, they want to hear.
Yeah, we get a price, and we may, there may be an economist scale there too, so we're going from micro to really small, I mean, it's not like, you know, we're.
Yeah.
Taking out five hundred people here, but perhaps, well, we'd certainly bring stability to a program if we did it, but we may be able to get a little bit of a better price with. You know, Dick Mark, how many people did you expect from the town, do you think?
There's more than the village. I have a salary down, but I'm, you know, looking at the guys that are like my age, you know, around here, we're gonna be having a few other guys, so. Um, you know, we have to, kinda like, if you're doing a now, the contracts have to begin for the, their insurance in full, when they retire. And, you know, what, what you were telling me is that the, um, when you're sixty five, you have to go into the Medicare program, so, yeah, you know, it would involve, you know, working in the union and.
Alright, thanks. Uh, anything else? You all good?
That's it.
Alright, Bobby?
Well, I was just gonna talk about the real term, uh, meeting on.
Yep.
On, we're, we had tentatively set a meeting for not even putting two and two together, Doug, and Robbie, I asked Rob for his availability, and it was Wednesday the eighteenth. And, uh, so, we were supposed to meet with them till we have to finalize, we need to find out how we're going to about to. Get the IGA, it's gotta be finalized, the, uh, industrial grade audit, and then we also need to figure out how we're going to. Get a letter of credit, Denise is confused how this is supposed to take place, so that's why we're having a meeting with them, but. Cause we're, it's getting to the point where we're gonna start to see things happening more with the, with the streetlight situation, so that's all, that, that's all I had, so for right now.
We'll have more.
And I'll re, and I'll re email him and tell him that that's probably not gonna work.
Even just like twenty minutes later.
If you can do four o'clock or something like that, be fine.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
I'm just worried about Denise, I don't wanna make her, you know.
Yeah.
Stick around.
Yeah, or I can, I can, I can hop in late, um, if I can make it to the, the New York foreground, uh, walkthrough maybe by two thirty, if the school allows me to go out early, which they typically are good with, as long as I give them early notice.
Okay.
Yeah, early isn't after the school day, but before the.
Alright, I won't do anything until I talk to Denise tomorrow, make sure she can, she's good for it.
Contract. Sure. Alright, any else, Bobby?
Nope, that's it.
Alright, sweet, thanks, uh, I don't think I have any old business. On, behind on my slides again, uh, so that being said, I have a quick letter that I put together with Jonah, that I reviewed with him today on the phone, and I apologize profusely for how on the, uh, me to get. To everyone, but this is the letter of support for Jonah, um, that I wanted to get approval on, uh, we're writing this letter as demonstration of village falls, full support for the I three imaging company LLC's grant application. For the New York National Grid Main Street Program, uh, in two thousand twenty one, Jonah, uh, theme is how you pronounce this name, right, Jonah, anyway, I think so. Uh, the principal of I three imaging company LLC purchased vacant buildings located one mechanic street, a historically important and well-known location in Huzik Falls. The purchase and renovation of one mechanic street and relocation, uh, to this historic, uh, spot in the heart of the village is an important step to bringing more manufacturing jobs to Huzik Falls, the property previously was. Part of a larger manufacturing enterprise and employed dozens of workers, but has sadly been vacant for over a decade, we're all excited for Jonah to bring life back to this location. Uh, pursuing and acquiring this location has been a bit, a big undertaking for Jonah for many years, and he has persevered through many obstacles assisted by the Huzik Falls Local Development Corporation, he has. Renovations in the works and looks to be open before the end of the year, with his track record for success, dedication to his company and, uh, community and his long-term vision of expansion, we're confident this plan will come to fruition. He knows the great things of this location and we strongly encourage national grid support, so I have a spot for all of us to sign this if you guys are good with that, um. Mark, he, he's been trying, he, he tried for like four years to buy that property?
This, this goes back a long time.
It's a lot, it's, it may be even before I started as mayor, but he was.
Yeah, I remember this from when I was doing district.
Okay, he was looking for that and he ran into problems because of the PFA situation over there, and they were doing the superfund investigation, uh, it's nice to see that he's looking to open this up by the end of the calendar year.
He hasn't given up, right?
Yeah, so, I'm looking for a motion, uh, to authorize the mayor and trustee to sign a letter of support.
I'll make that motion.
Sorry.
Thank you, Bobby and Bobby, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
I oppose or abstentions, great, I'll get a printout, um, from the printer over there when we're done with the regular meeting and get to you guys real fast. Um, I have another quick motion from Denise, um, we had, there's a water sewer bill that the usage portion was charged thirty five dollars and forty cents, but that. Exact amount got paid at closing, so we're looking for a motion to adjust the water sewer bill for seventy two Main Street, uh, down from the three sixty dot sixty to three twenty five dot twenty. Reflecting the thirty five dollars and forty cents that has already been paid.
Moment, yeah.
Thank you, and double second it, thank you, uh, and, and just for the, the point of the meeting, it, this is, there's only a few reasons why we, we are legally able to adjust. Water sewer bills and this is one of those, the checkbox that is legal, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose or abstentions, uh, carries, I already did the motion to authorize the mayor and we already did the mo, uh, the, the, the thing about the, the cannabis, uh, situation, so the only last thing is. Um, there have been so many things on our radar recently, things that have or have not moved forward, we've talked about, so I wanted to just get a full list and prioritize. Uh, where we're going from here, one of the things, uh, that I, I, hasn't come up is the Historic Preservation Commission. And Elena is gonna get back to us about if it needs to be a local law, or if we can do it via resolution, but Megan did mention that. She's got a list of five people who are interested in being a part of the commission already, so it's just a matter of us doing what we need to do to approve it, so I told, I apologized again, said we gotta figure out what this is, but. Even if it's a local law, we maybe will throw it out in a special meeting and then look to approve it in November, cause it's not a, a huge deal, a local law.
We were looking, uh, for a charter, who, what, what power does they have? Cause I know in some municipalities, there's a lot of power.
Okay.
And I don't know if this is advisory.
Look, that's why I didn't wanna brush it and I told, like, brush it's gonna, uh, mayor, whether we did a local law or if it was resolution, it should be very detailed and support on that.
Yes. So, this I wanna make sure is a priority to do, so that's a huge one, uh, we've already talked about our SWMA, uh, tonight, and, and Dan and Deb have talked about doing that. Um, what, um, Kevin had brought up eminent domain. Um, and the question about eminent domain, I think we're all in support of going over that for the Catania Properties along Route twenty two where the sidewalk is undermined and it's just a, it's a big safety issue along with other things that we're trying to do there. Uh, it's another one of those properties that hasn't had taxes paid on it for years, uh, it's just a matter of. Putting the money forward to do that, whether.
How, how many years behind the taxes is it?
Kevin?
What's that?
Catania Properties, how many years is that behind on taxes?
Just two.
I thought it was four. It's just two.
I was thinking possibly four, four might be easier.
The county, yeah, no, we'd have to wait more years. None of us want that.
Is it like that and got with the town, the county proposes on that one?
Yeah.
I wonder if we maintain the greenway going through lower property? Will the greenway spend there, the greenway's been there for twelve years now, I think.
Benefit, I can say even from a New York forward perspective, if that because of that greenway issue, we couldn't do paving or any development to grant because of that.
Yep. Yep.
Dom can't be in the grant because he wanted to have a wraparound porch.
Yep.
Outside deck, he can't go over that property, so it's stopped.
Yeah.
Two major projects.
I was, I was just asking Elena, because we, the, but, there's, there's three parcels in that area, the lowest parcel is on the river, you know, we maintain.
Four.
It's four parcels?
It's four.
The other one is, uh.
I'll bring up the map, you keep going, I know it's four.
Okay.
It's four, it's right here, it's four of the tax areas.
On the other side, on the other side.
There you go.
Right there.
The other side of, uh, not.
Keep, keep talking.
The greenway, we've maintained it, mowed it, um, patrolled it with our police department.
Yep, those are the numbers I have.
And otherwise kept up that lower parcel, the one that stretches from about the coaling shed, the old coaling shed right down to the, the shopping bridge there.
This is three right here, and this is the big one.
Okay, so that is three of there, okay, I'm talking about the big one on the lower, and my question is, can the village just take it through an adverse possession? We've maintained it, we've patrolled it, we've mowed the, mowed the grass, we've used it for village purposes for, for the greenway and everything else, I mean, at what point does it become an adverse possession, it's been over eight years.
We sort of have to use the Supreme Court and get quite a title to say that the municipality has adversely possessed it and therefore owns it by operation of law. So we can do that, but then if for some reason the Supreme Court says, no, we don't agree with you, then you have to start that eminent domain process separately for that.
But, but that can happen faster than the eminent domain.
Es, especially if we can't get ahold of.
It's.
Yes, but it will still take some time.
So can the village hire?
And money. And.
Can the village hire a private investigator to find out where he is and see if he's, see if he has power of attorney or some way of maybe negotiating maybe family or.
Yeah.
Maybe not.
Well, it's also, it hasn't, he's never negotiated or engaged in any negotiation.
Oh, he always wanted like two hundred fifty thousand dollars for that property.
I thought that there was something.
Oh, way too bad.
Yeah, Betty Grable was there or something else.
But it's never been appraised, his parcels have never been appraised, correct?
Uh, we have somebody.
Then we have to do an appraisal.
We have somebody that's looking into it and she's just waiting for the go ahead to move forward on it.
So.
An appraiser?
An appraiser.
There's a little bit of history here, because when we did the sewer project that ran a sewer main through there, we had to get an easement. And that ended up having to go to, I think, a state superior, Supreme Court of some form, um, and he actually showed up there and contested it, but we still got it and we had to pay for the value, but I know there's been some action there. And I think Andy was involved in all of that, so he would better give context on that.
I have reached out to him, he didn't provide me too much, but maybe I can ask him about easements specifically.
I'll ask him as well.
According, according to Andy, he represented himself pro se.
Oh, he did, that was exciting.
Okay.
Yep. Not as exciting as the ten-page letter I got for him, but it was still pretty exciting.
I tried contacting some family and, uh, I did find one family down in, uh, Long Island and they said we have nothing to do with them.
I tried too, none of them, none of them, they all went to, they all went to dead end phone numbers, they all went to.
Really? Wow, alright.
He was a motorcycle officer in New York City, I think, or Staten, Staten Island.
Yep, yep.
Well, that explains it.
It may be worth to, I think Kevin's going, hiring a private investigator, cause for all we know, I mean, we've heard a lot, there's a lot of conjecture out there about what his status is or whatever, but. Um, there may be family that has power of attorney that may just say, I'm so sick of hearing about that thing in Huzik Falls.
We just don't want contacts anymore.
Yeah, I, this is bad, my dad, I, I've just hired it, I've had to listen to this for the last twenty years, you never know, you know, so.
So we're, I mean, this is just to convert it into dollar figures, we're talking about a private investigator, we're talking about legal fees going through court.
Appraisal.
Appraisal, so procedural wise, what do we need to approve as a board to move forward on this?
Can, can the, can the appraiser donate their services?
Yeah.
Well, I have, I have somebody that's, uh, looking at it, she, she said the biggest problem with the properties is the ones by, uh, on Classic Street, and she said, how do you. Appraise those properties because they're.
Dan, sidewalk over.
You would have to spend a ton of money to build up from the ground and.
Yep.
This is not street level.
Yep.
And, she said, how would I appraise that against something else in the village?
You have another hole.
She can use comparables outside of the village.
Yeah, she even said that, even that is, is tough to come by, um, comparables for that, for that, the whole underground.
It's a pretty unique hill box.
Nobody else is selling a hole.
It's a friggin'.
Slate?
Demolished hole.
Yeah.
But she's willing to do it and I, I think she'll donate her services, just have to give her the go ahead to, to do that. She's, she.
I mean, to me, that's a big step forward, because you're gonna wanna know, before you qualify public hearing and put it out, you're gonna wanna know what.
What's it gonna cost us?
Right, what's it gonna cost us, the village?
Yeah.
Here's another angle I have.
And you can't negotiate with anybody if we don't get a lot of.
Right, exactly.
This spot right here is where the sidewalk ha, was so messed up that they had to put in the, like cold pack or something like that right there. Um, it's undermined underneath here and it's gonna definitely incorporate this lot here and some of this lot here, I don't know if it would incorporate that lot as well. Is there some way of getting an engineer to come in and say, you're gonna have to make these safety fixes and you're gonna need all three of these properties if that's what it leads to? Cause it's, 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 as a safety issue.
So what you're saying is we should tell the guy he's gonna have to pay X amount of money to.
It's gonna cost them because of.
Well, I mean, like.
Like you can't just keep, keeping it for free.
Going after this for, from the safety perspective of what it is, the sidewalk.
Caving in, right.
Is caving in, it's gonna go onto the road, it's Route twenty two.
So there's a safety concern that should be addressed separately from this conversation.
Would the safety concern allow us to take the property to make the fix?
Oh, to make the fix, but not to take the property into like ownership possession.
Okay.
But the safety.
Yeah, let me explain that, you have to take it for a public project.
Okay, okay.
But the safety issues and the liability exposure that they have on it is an argument to them, I think the owner should get rid of it.
Well, I think.
Potentially, we can't sit here and say that.
I, don't we have a local law that allows us to fix that and assess the repair cost?
We do.
I mean, when you're presented with, uh, you know, that beautiful waterfront hillside property is gonna cost thirty eight thousand four hundred dollars.
To fix a sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna excavate, backfill, retaining walls, and, and by the way, it'll be.
Yep.
You don't know where the owner of the property is and you have to notice in order to share and you're not gonna be able to find them, so then, I mean, you can go through that whole process.
That's a problem, that's a problem, that's a problem.
But that's what I'm saying, that's separate enough, to me, that's separate than the eminent domain, like it shouldn't hold up the eminent domain proceeding.
But we can do the both.
And then, in the meantime, something's negotiated, then you can always withdraw the proceeding.
But it's only negotiating if we can find.
It goes back to private investigator, we need to find out where he is and what his status is, people, we can make anything, anything, anything.
Okay, so would we?
Do we get it out first, is that something you have to get it out?
No, it's a more of a professional service, you can just see if we can find out what the rates would be for something like that and approve it up to a certain amount, and that's me.
I can do that, cause, um, a friend of mine works for, is a PI.
Okay, so can we?
He works for somebody else, but.
Can we make the motion now, or do we need to get an idea of how much it's gonna cost hourly before we do it?
I mean, it depends on what the motion is, you can make a motion, but if there's no limit on it, then it's endless.
No, we need to make the limit.
I, I would suggest put a dollar figure, like three thousand dollars just right up front.
I was thinking the same number.
So we can move on it.
Uh, so, motion to approve finding a specialized service in the way of a, some sort of private investigator to try to track down. The owner of this property with a maximum to be spent of up to three thousand dollars.
So.
Three thousand, okay.
Alright, so, motion made by Doug, and I need a second before we switch to discussion, Dan, thank you, alright, keep going, Dan.
No, I, I just, well, you know, if you, whenever you have time, if you wouldn't mind looking into what the odds of an adverse possession are on the lower property, cause I, that one's the, you know, I mean, the greenway goes.
You have to get a lot of documentation, it's the maintenance and.
What we've done to it.
Yeah.
And that we've maintained.
I mean, it can be done, that's, if it's the year, as long as it's been ten years or more.
Because a greenway's been here since eight oh eight or oh six or oh ten or ten or somewhere.
More than nine, I have to be, about twelve.
What's the least time?
I don't understand why when the county sends, sends those tax bills to end. I don't understand why when the county sends, sends those tax bills to him in Hoboken, New Jersey, they don't, they aren't returned.
How do we know they're not returned?
Well, when Jonathan, when uh the property on Church Street, when his P O box isn't active, then.
It gets returned.
It's essentially a direct address.
That's what I'm saying, maybe he's in Hope, maybe the owner's in Hope, looking in Jersey though.
What's that motion?
Or it's.
Um, no, the home is sold.
To spend up to three thousand dollars on using specialized services and private investigator
Did you check the address? So there, there are companies that provide um.
to track down the owner for for parcels.
Recipient services.
Um and you can use the numbers that are out there.
You can set up an LLC and then they will sign and pay service of anything. What, what were we just, there was something we were just doing here. We were looking at who owned a property or something, and I looked it up and it was a company in New York City.
LLC and then the Secretary of State is there.
Yes, yeah, and it goes to a, it goes to a company that accepts service and then they will then in turn forward it to the owner, so you don't get to, you, we basically don't know who.
So this bill collector's is trying to find you?
Yeah, they send it to this company and then their only job is to accept service of it and forward it to the top secret location of the, of the said individual. I'm trying to, I can't remember, it was one, it's something we were looking at in town.
Well, if you think of it, she does an email on that.
Yeah, I can't remember the name of it.
Is it all vacant property, are all the contents vacant land?
Yes, yes, yes. So we have the motion, I mean, it's been settled, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose your abstentions? Alright, Carrie's. Alright, so we've talked about historic uh preservation, we've spot, talked about our swama, we've talked about eminent domain. What are the, uh we've told, there's policy, there's policy.
Whistleblower policy.
That the whistleblower policies, it's, talk to us about that state requirements.
It's mandated for all employees starting January two thousand twenty-two.
Is that a federal requirement or a near state?
State, state labor department.
Okay.
So we have, we have, we're operating under it now, so I take it to priority to.
So Dan, do you have, you, you, did you send it to all of us or just to me?
I, I sent, I sent, I sent, I sent you a national law review article on it.
You sent it to me.
Let me forward that to Dan and Deb, policies and Elena as well?
I should have checked it.
I have Doug's.
Okay, you have it.
Okay.
That can go anywhere you want.
That's what I said to.
I don't think we should wait, if this is a required thing, we can just make it and do it.
We can, we can adopt a policy and then put it into the handbook once it's done.
Okay, so we can adopt it if we have it done, so we can prioritize that for next meeting. Um any, let's see here.
Organizational meeting.
Organizational meeting definitely needs to be a priority, so that one I have.
Is, is there a reason why we're not doing that?
Um, uh the, two reasons, the first is just time to put it together with everything else that's been going on. The second one is we're still trying to research some of the, it's like our swa- it's like the, our swama and transportation. There's all these ways that it's always been done and as we look further into it, we're like, why is it always done this way? So.
But isn't there some mandates, like if you're a hearing half officer, don't we have to have that?
The mandates according to New York state law are very sparse and not clear. And if there isn't one on, it just, the, the previous one is still in effect, so it's not like we're out of compliance and
Yeah, we don't have.
the only requirement's like, it has to happen at some point in the fiscal year.
That was a previous board member that doesn't exist.
What's that?
What's her name was the chair hearing officer. She's not on the board anymore.
Meg?
Yeah.
Your officer for what?
It's one of the uh, it's one of the things and it.
One of the hiring officers.
Oh, oh, oh.
Alright, right.
So if, if there was a need for that and we need, we needed a fair market or fair also.
Well, that's, I just wanna make sure we're compliant.
No, we are compliant, you, I. Yeah, and you can look it up on, on uh NICOM, NICOM is a good resource for that. They talk about how there's very few requirements on it, it's one of those oddities that's there, but there's not a lot of direction. Um that being said, I still wanna get that set uh very soon.
You're gonna have to use the website, cause I knew you took the course and I seen you took the course.
Yep. Uh yes, I have all chapters and chapters of printouts and I'm working on it um when I have free time, which is not often. But I, I still, I'm still working on it, I'm, I'm hoping to get um at least a template up for you guys to look at and make comments on design and look before I get big into all the uh filling, filling the content. Any other things you guys have on the radar?
Um what about the Music Falls Country Club water bill?
That is another one.
What was that?
How was that? On top of that.
Um just uh, just finding out where we are with the, with the, the water usage that the country club did.
Oh, I thought, we did. Jim, Jim gave me that number.
Yeah, I don't know where it is in the process of, it's been delivered, if we gotten paid yet, that sort of thing.
Oh, the bill's been delivered yet?
Yes, it's just following up on the bill.
Okay, cause I remember Jim, Jim called me the day that he went up there and
Yep.
My question about that, what about the water pit at Music Falls Country Club, the, the meter pit, that's gotta be in, done.
Yes, but that's a longer term thing, but yes, that's still, that's probably a spring thing, but we'll follow up with that.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Cause he.
I'll mention that.
Carter's property is pending again, is, did he buy it?
No, he's not, he's not in, that's not in the program.
Okay.
That's not gonna happen.
Alright.
How, how about the utility pole on Lower Classic? Should be talking about that.
Do we report to me?
Um yeah, I told, I tried to report it, but then it's not a national grid um pole, so our people have to fix that.
What?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're a poller, we're off them to replace the pole.
So I contacted, so I contacted Kenny and those guys.
Good thing. So our guys have to fix that pole? What's connected to that?
No, that's a big transformer on that thing.
Yeah, we can't.
It's number, pole number nine, right?
The only one sitting in Lower Classic Street, it's a big old rusty small.
Hold on, I'll bring it up on the screen view here.
If it's got transformers on it, it's their problem.
Our guys are not touch, touching it, no way.
But we can't touch it, no.
Then maybe I'm looking at the wrong pole, because I wasn't given an exact number, so I walked down there and tried to figure out which one it was.
I got it, one second here.
It can't.
No, that's not ours. Ours have.
We don't control voltage.
So here is the overview map. Where'd you go, Mouse? Um this is Classic Street, this is the wood block, the pole's over here, right?
It's in the middle of.
It's right in between those buildings.
On this side?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, cause I was told it was at the like lower end of Classic Street, so.
It is Lower Classic, it's.
That is Lower Classic.
Oh, you're looking over here?
Lower, yeah, yeah.
That's, that's, no, that's Lower Classic, but that's it right there.
Oh, it's off here.
So the middle of the street.
So it's the middle of Lower Classic.
Yeah. We call, of course, everybody calls it Lower Classic Street.
Oh.
Cause you're talking about the white pole that we.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Uh yeah, we, we do nothing normal here.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's also part of what we always do.
Yeah, can you just, it's like Church Street, so you're.
Can I say, can you confirm that before next Wednesday?
Yeah, so that'll be an easy thing.
Yeah, yes, I will get it done as soon as possible. So middle of, mid Lower Classic Street.
Here it is.
I'm off tomorrow, it's my birthday.
Of course.
Happy birthday.
See this one right here?
Now it's on the other side, now it's at the rusty one.
This one over here?
Yeah.
Oh jeez, that was even on the wrong side.
No.
So this one here is what you're talking about, on this side.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
No!
No.
No, it's the one on, on wood block side.
Right on the right-hand side, right there, the one with the meat, one with the.
This one.
Yeah.
I just said that one.
It's the other side. No, it's not, it's the one next to wood block.
It's a.
You see why I was confused?
So which one are we talking about?
Cause the one Dog's talking about is a metal pole, correct?
No, I was like, oh, this is rusty.
That's a metal pole, that's.
I'm asking, which one are you talking about? This one?
Actually, one that's dangerous, yes. No, no, it's dangerous, it's all rusty.
Oh, okay. Do you happen to know the number of it or?
Why don't you and Kenny go down when you're in next and decide which one.
I'll go check it out tomorrow morning, I'll be there tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Check it out?
Thank you.
Check them both out.
I think I'll work around four.
I'll come see you on Friday. Robert, you got a flashlight in my truck?
I mean, that's.
Alright.
I can stop and do it, I can do it.
You got a flashlight in my truck, we're going in.
I'm gonna hide that before we.
Right, we need to go over, let's go.
Any other priorities? Alright, hearing done.
Wait, wait, wait.
Kevin, go, oh, sorry.
The, um, some kind of a, a template and letter to uh carry out our local laws we passed, both for junk cars and for our uh vacant properties.
Has that been worked on yet? Uh the junk property, the, not the junk property, good lord, the junk.
We have those too.
Vehicle law and the vacant building registry law. Do we have a starting point to send letters out to start moving on this?
No.
Did Dan talk to you about ho- offering to help with that? And I'm not just saying that because he's not here, but I think he did. Alright, that's, we'll make that as a priority, starting to get the ball rolling on both of those. I am pretty confident.
What do you guys do, come out with a letter that says?
Start with the template letter.
Open it, I think.
Yeah.
That way, Mark just sets it up.
Yep.
It could tell me something, it's a sample.
Uh so that's junk vehicle and building, vacant building registry.
How do they know? How do they know?
And I like to add to the list a comprehensive.
Yeah, go, no, I'm sorry, sorry.
A comprehensive plan. Yes.
Oh, yes.
Cause we're, that hurts us now, we're making decisions without an overall plan for the whole village, not just that.
I want to budget that in. I think we should go to a new um group like a, like a La Verge and maybe talk to them about what it would cost to help the village take what we have now and get to that comprehensive plan because that opens up the doors for everything.
It does. I think they need the town, so it probably makes sense if you had them do it, they already have all the information.
Hey, um town supervisor over there, you guys, the town is using La Verge for your comprehensive plan, but you're not done yet, correct?
We just got a rough draft.
Okay, so yes, it is La Verge. Alright, we're, we're thinking about doing a similar approach, so. Well, we'll have those conversations uh off, off the record outside the meeting.
Mark, when's the last time you, that was updated?
So it looks like we update every ten years, I think.
Oh yeah, we got a few.
We have, we have passed, we have kind of overstated previous one, to get a few more years out of it.
I think we did that when Marilyn was supervisor, wasn't it?
Um, it may have, it, it went back a while. Might have been two thousand and four.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah, and I think like ten years, like two thousand and fourteen.
Fourteen.
And then, and then one more thing.
Kill a lot of trees.
Yeah, go for it.
We're still waiting for the parking study, A.
Yeah, yeah.
And B, if we get New York Ford Grant particularly, we need to update it to look at projections of growth, not just what it already is.
Projections of what type of?
Of growth, parking growth, yeah, particularly downtown.
Okay, okay. Alright.
Uh how about um Old Mitsui property should be on there, shouldn't it?
Yep, well, yeah.
I just.
Which, we gotta answer that on Wednesday, okay, but.
I may have a couple more details to share with you, cause I feel like I just got something from down the backtrack a couple days ago. Um and I know that uh I asked Dave to try to, David's been connecting with um the attorney for Honeywell who's involved with this on a couple different matters. No, I'm sorry, the email is related to final steps in the closure process. Um so no, that, but I will um, I will follow up again with Dave on that.
Okay.
That actually is not us slowing things down, that's their, their side.
No, no, I understand, I just wanna know we are, that's gotta be on, we wanna keep it on our radar, that's.
But yeah, no, that's a priority. Alright, anything else?
So, so, so it's just on your Katsui, our message to the state about it is we're still in negotiations around indemnification, correct?
We've had discussions on acquiring it and getting the details worked out for it, it's com- a complicated issue because of the site closure plan with DEC. Um but we're still moving forward with doing that and both sides are, are looking to come to an agreement on the village ending up with that property. I don't even think you need to go far into the whole indemnification and blah, 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 I think it's just, we're both, we're both working. Our attorneys have been having discussions on it.
Can we run DEC into it?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the record on it, it, it's, it's a, it was a potential super fund site, did not become a super fund site. There was a full closure report on it um that was overseen by DEC, that work was done. They're looking to do their final closure stuff right now. And at the same time, we're having conversations with the company about trying to find a way to acquire that. And that's all a hundred percent legitimate on the record. Alright, anything else? What's that?
Procurement policy finally.
That's part of the um organizational meeting, so yes. Alright. No, I wanna, I wanna tackle the procurement policy, cause I wanna talk to all the department heads about it as well and see what has been working, what hasn't been working. Um in fact, one of the things we just did is um we opened up an Amazon account that Kenny and myself and Denise, maybe even you have access to, because we found out from Greg that it would be so much easier and more inexpensive and quicker to go on Amazon and make purchases that way as long as it's in the budget, so. It's just one of, another one of growing things and we're doing this in the right direction, we should do codify it, so. Um looking for anything else the board wants to bring up and hearing.
I'm not gonna be at the November meeting, I can zoom in, right?
I'm gonna flip the table in anger, but thank you for the heads up. Actually, I may have a conflict with the December meeting.
Yeah, I got it, it's not really.
Um okay, thank you for the heads up. I'm looking for a motion to move into executive session to discuss personal matters with no business to be conducted, conclusion of executive session.
Motion.
Thank you, Deb, Bobby, wanna second that or vice versa?
Yes, yes, I will.
Further discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose your abstentions? Carrie's, we are moving into executive session at a later time than I want to admit, eight twenty-nine PM.